Welcome to our council meeting.
Welcome to our council meeting in the interest of time efficiency and ensuring that everyone who wishes to address the council is given the opportunity to do so, the following will apply to all comments made by the public. Each speaker shall be allotted three minutes to address the council unless such time is extended by the mayor or by questions from council. Groups shall designate a spokesperson to avoid repetition of comments. Every effort will be made to avoid interrupting speakers. For your information, the items listed in Section 11 of the agenda are for first reading and introduction, and the council will not take final action on them tonight. If you have any questions on these items, please see the city staff in the back of the chambers. Thank you for participating in your city government. And now call this meeting to order. And if we can all please stand in remembrance of September 11th and observance of the anniversary of the 9/11 attacks in America, on America, please join me in a moment of silence and remembrance of the 2,977 people who lost their lives that morning. May they never be forgotten. Also remember their friends, their families and loved ones. Remember those who survived the horrific events of that day? Remember the heroes who responded in the hours, days, weeks and months following the attacks. Their lives will never be the same, let us not forget. Please join me in a moment of silence. Please be seated. I'd also like to add, and this has nothing to do with politics, but please keep the family of Charlie Kirk and your thoughts and prayers. That was a horrific tragedy that happened yesterday. All right, Madam Clerk, can you please, I'm sorry, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, we have that too. We changed things up a little bit here today.
(inaudible) to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Now we can sit. And will the clerk please call the roll?
Mayor Robertson?
Here.
Deputy Mayor Gilbert?
Here.
Councilmember Paul?
Here.
Councilmember Urban?
Here.
Councilmember Fletcher?
Here.
All right, thank you. And agenda update, and to, and City Manager, do you have any agenda updates?
Yes, thank you. Public hearings number three through 10 and 14 and 15, we're going to request that they are continued to the October meeting. These were all related to the future land use map that was changing, and we had a workshop with the city council where we were directed to make some additional changes to the map, so we still have to bring those back at the October meeting. I was originally going to ask how many people were here for that, I'm just going to assume that the majority are, and I would like to ask if the council, if we could just go ahead and read those into the record and continue them, so most of these people can have their evening back. When we have the meeting in October, it's going to be at the community center. This room is going to be having some construction done for a few months, so the meeting will be October 9th, 2025, at the community center at 6:30.
All right, thank you. Were you going to make a motion on those now?
Each one has to be read in and then continued.
All right, Madam Clerk, can you please read it into the record, each item?
Final public hearing for ordinance number 2025-49, in ordinance of the city council of the city of St. Cloud, Florida, adopting a transportation element of the comprehensive plan, project CPA 2500006, providing for filing the planning commission's recommendations, proof of publication, applicability effects, severability copies on file and effective date.
And can we get a motion on that?
Motion to continue.
Motion to continue, Councilmember Urban.
Second.
Second from Councilmember Fletcher. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Deputy Mayor Gilbert?
Aye.
Councilmember Fletcher?
Aye.
Councilmember Paul?
Aye.
Councilmember Urban?
Aye.
Mayor Robertson?
Aye.
Motion carries five zero.
And which item number was that?
Item number three.
Gotcha, thank you. And please read item number four into the record.
Final public hearing for ordinance number 2024-50, in ordinance of the city council of the city of St. Cloud, Florida, adopting a large-scale comprehensive plan, planning amendment pursuant to Section 163.3184 Florida statutes amending the Florida land use element and the comprehensive, of the comprehensive plan, project CPA 20, CPA 240007, providing for amending of official future land use text and the map of the comprehensive plan, filing of the planning commission's recommendations, proof of publication, applicability effects, severability copies on file and effective, file, file, on file, scrivener's errors and effective date.
All right, can we get a motion on that item?
Motion to continue.
Motion to continue, Councilmember Paul, second from Councilmember Urban. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Fletcher?
Aye.
Councilmember Paul?
Aye.
Councilmember Urban?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Gilbert?
Aye.
Mayor Robertson?
Aye.
Motion carries five zero.
And will the clerk please read item number five?
Final public hearing for ordinance number 2025-55, in ordinance of the city council of the city of St. Cloud, Florida, providing a zoning amendment of the zoning map of the land development code of the city of St. Cloud, Florida, specifically changing the zoning designation approximately plus minus 24.317 acres, identified as Stephanie Lee Rossside Memorial Park rezoning project ZMA 25-00008, from A agricultural to O, O R open space recreation located at 2701 Missouri Avenue, providing for entering the designation of official zoning map, filing of the planning recommendations, proof of publication, severability and effective date.
And can we get a motion on that item?
Motion.
Motion from Deputy Mayor Gilbert?
Second.
Second from Councilmember Fletcher. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Paul?
Aye.
Councilmember Urban?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Gilbert?
Aye.
Councilmember Fletcher?
Aye.
Mayor Robertson?
Aye.
Motion carries five zero.
You need a break yet? Will the clerk please write, read item number six?
Final public hearing for ordinance number 2025-56, in ordinance of the city council of the city of St. Cloud, Florida, providing a zoning amendment of the zoning map of the land development code of the city of St. Cloud, Florida, specifically changing the zoning designation approximately plus minus 0.118 acres, identified as Romo Road rezoning project, ZMA 25-0009, from R1A single-family dwelling to O R open space recreation generally located on the southeast corner of Romo Road and Eastern Avenue, providing entering the designation of official zoning map and filing of the planning commission's recommendations, proof of publication, severability and effective date.
All right, can we get a motion on that?
Motion to continue.
Motion to continue, Councilmember Paul.
Second.
Second from Councilmember Urban. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Urban?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Gilbert?
Aye.
Councilmember Fletcher?
Aye.
Councilmember Paul?
Aye.
Mayor Robertson?
Aye.
Motion carries five zero.
Will the clerk please read item number seven?
Final public hearing for ordinance number 2025-57, in ordinance of the city council of the city of St. Cloud, Florida, providing a zoning amendment of the zoning map of the land development code of the city of St. Cloud, Florida, to specifically changing the zoning designation approximately plus minus 0.97 acres, identified as Canary Park rezoning project ZMA 25-00010, from R2 single and two-family dwelling to O R open space recreation located at 901 Virginia Avenue, providing for entering the designation of official zoning map, filing of the planning commission's recommendations, proof of publication, severability and effective date.
And can we get a motion on that item?
Motion to continue.
Motion to continue, Councilmember Fletcher.
Second.
Second from Councilmember Paul. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Deputy Mayor Gilbert?
Aye.
Councilmember Fletcher?
Aye.
Councilmember Paul?
Aye.
Councilmember Urban?
Aye.
Mayor Robertson?
Aye.
Motion carries five zero.
Will the clerk please read item number eight?
Final public hearing for ordinance number 2025-59, in ordinance of the city council of the city of St. Cloud, Florida, providing the zoning amendment of the zoning map of the land development code of the city of St. Cloud, Florida, specifically changing zoning designation approximately plus minus 1.95 acres, 95 acres, identified as DMI Business Park Phase II project, ZMA 25-00005, from R1A single-family dwelling to 1-1 industrial located at 1505 Orange Avenue, providing for entering the designation of official zoning map, filing of the planning commission's recommendations, proof of publication, severability and effective date.
All right, can we get a motion on that item? Okay, motion from Deputy Mayor Gilbert?
Second.
Second from Councilmember Paul. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Fletcher?
Aye.
Councilmember Paul?
Aye.
Councilmember Urban?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Gilbert?
Aye.
Mayor Robertson?
Aye.
Motion carries five zero.
Will the clerk please read item number nine?
Final public hearing for ordinance number 2025-62, in ordinance of the city council of the city of St. Cloud, Florida, assigning a future land use designation approximately plus minus 9.04 acres, identified as Grace Community Church, project CPA 25-00007, located north of East Earl Bronson Memorial Highway and east of Nova Road, south of Lake Lizzie Drive and west of Bradley Drive, from community center, from community center county to community center city, providing for amending of the future, official future land use map of the comprehensive plan, filing of the planning commission's recommendations, proof of publication, applicability effects, severability copies on file and effective date.
Can we get a motion, item number nine?
Motion to continue.
Motion to continue, Councilmember Urban.
Second.
Second from Councilmember Paul. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Paul?
Aye.
Councilmember Urban?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Gilbert?
Aye.
Councilmember Fletcher?
Aye.
Mayor Robertson?
Aye.
Motion carries five zero.
Will the clerk please read item number 10?
Final public hearing for ordinance number 2025-63, in ordinance of the city council of the city of St. Cloud, Florida, providing the zoning amendment of the zoning map of the land development code of the city of St. Cloud, Florida, specifically changing the zoning designation approximately plus minus 9.04 acres, identified as Grace Community Church project, ZMA 25-00011, generally located north of E, East Earl Bronson Memorial Highway, east of Nova Road, south of Lake Lizzie Road, Lake Lizzie Drive and west of Bradley Drive, from CCP community center perimeter county to CCP community center perimeter city, providing for amending of official future land use map of the comprehensive plan, filing of the planning commission's recommendations, proof of publication, applicability and effect, severability copies on file and effective date.
And can we get a motion?
Motion.
Motion approved, to continue, Deputy Mayor Gilbert?
Second.
Second from Councilmember Urban. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Urban?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Gilbert?
Aye.
Councilmember Fletcher?
Aye.
Councilmember Paul?
Aye.
Mayor Robertson?
Aye.
Motion carries five zero.
And I think, what do we go, item number 10?
14.
14, yep. Please read item number 14 into the record.
Final public hearing for ordinance number 2025-64, in ordinance of the city council of the city of St. Cloud, Florida, for the, for amending the Chapter III Performance and Sitting Standards of the Land Development Code by amending Article 15 titled Supplemental Regulations by amending Section 3.15.12, Classification of Annexed Land Identified as LDC Table of Classified Lands, Update Project CCA 25-00004, Providing for Severability, Scrivener's Errors, Conflict Administrative Corrections, Codification, Publication and Effective Date.
And can we get a motion for item number 14?
Motion.
Second.
Second, second from Councilmember Fletcher, sorry, motion from Councilmember Fletcher to continue, second from Councilmember Urban. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Deputy Mayor Gilbert?
Aye.
Councilmember Fletcher?
Aye.
Councilmember Paul?
Aye.
Councilmember Urban?
Aye.
Mayor Robertson?
Aye.
Motion carries five zero.
And will the clerk please read item number 15?
Final public hearing for ordinance number 2025-65, in ordinance of the city council of the city of St. Cloud, Florida, for amending the, amending Chapter III Performance and Performance and Sitting Standards of the Land Development Code by adding a new article titled Article 12, Urban Infill Centers, identified as Urban Infill Centers LDC Update, Project CCA 25-000025, providing for Urban Infill Centers standards and also including severability, scrivener's errors, conflict administrative corrections, codification, publications and effective date.
All right, can we get a motion, item number 15?
Motion to continue.
Motion to continue, Councilmember Paul.
Second.
Second from Councilmember Urban. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Fletcher?
Aye.
Councilmember Paul?
Aye.
Councilmember Urban?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Gilbert?
Aye.
Mayor Robertson?
Aye.
Motion carries five zero.
All right, thank you all for coming, we're going home, I think we're done. Just got a lot lighter. All right, let's go back to the beginning here, and, and right now, we have a presentation of the Patriot Award to Veronica Miller and Melissa Dunklin by Pamela J. McGee from the Office of the Secretary of Defense, Employer Support of the Guard and Reserve.
Anyone who was here for one of those items that was just continued, it will be at the October 9th city council meeting at 6:30 in the community center, and there's not going to be any more discussion on it this evening.
If I can ask the nominees, please, and Captain Lou to come up? Good evening, I won't take much of your time. My name is Pamela McGee, I am a Air Force veteran, and I am a volunteer with the Employee Support of the Guard and Reserve, and this organization was created by Department of Defense in 1972 to support Guard and Reserve that work for various employers across the world, the government, and to support their going out and, and being able to serve our country. This Patriot Award goes to individuals that the, the Guard or reservist submits as a superior leader towards them showing support when they go out in the field and do their jobs and do their roles. So I have a short little statement going to make here. So tonight, the recipients of the Patriot Award were nominated by Captain Lou, who serves with the US Air Reserve in the medical support. He wishes to recognize his supervisors Veronica Miller and Melissa Dunklin, to the support these leaders have provided to Captain Lou during deployment and his time here in St. Cloud as an employee. Now balancing the demands of the civilian life and the rigors of military life is challenging. The Department of Defense knows that the efforts the employees make to support these soldiers and are appreciative of that. For this reason, we are now about, about to present first Veronica Miller. With this award, now we'll ask Captain Lou to pin them with an honorary ESGR pen to Next, we'll ask Captain Lou to say a few words in regards to how, the reason he submitted these ladies for this award.
I just want to thank my director, city manager and city for supporting me while I serve in Army Reserve, with the more employer like you who understand and respect for those people who serve. Thank you.
We're almost done. The last part of this is what we have, we have a statement of support here that we asked our, the organization to sign to indicate their ongoing support for the Guard and Reserve, and we've asked the mayor if he would sign this for us tonight as well.
Cameron just can't wait to talk about transportation to us. Yep, next we have a presentation regarding roadway improvements and tri-party agreements by Mariema Petel. Are you doing it? Okay, but also with Cameron, her sidekick.
Good evening, I'm Cameron Crandall, Deputy Public Works Director, talking about mobility fee credits today. So this is the Framework Streets map. This is a map we put together with the city and the county. It shows existing roads and proposed roads. This is what we want our transportation network to look like. The collector roads are the city's responsibility, the arterial roads are the county's responsibility. I'll, I'll, I'll speak a little closer, sorry. So collector roads are the city roads, arterial roads are the county's responsibility. We built our mobility fee rates based on this map. We said, this is what it's cost to build these proposed roads, this is what it's going to cost to improve the existing roads, and we developed the rate based on that. Part of the way we're constructing this transportation network is through the tri-party transportation agreements. What you see here are some of the roadways that are in the tri-party transportation agreements that have either already been approved or in the process of being approved now. And they're all tied to developments, and when a development comes in that's near a road or encompassing a road, we look at it, and if it's a framework road, if it's in our map, then the city will work with the developer to get what we want. And we do that through mobility fee credits.
Cameron, go ahead.
Could you go back a second, just so the audience knows, could you show, explain to them the outline of the area?
Yes, sir.
The JPA, I'm sorry, just so they know that.
That is the joint planning area.
And that's, yeah, the purple outline, correct, Cameron?
Correct, sir.
I just want to make that clear for the record and the, and the audience, please. So thank you very much.
Right, the, the subject of the tri-party transportation agreements are only developments within the joint planning agreement area. One of the ways we're building these roads are with mobility fee credits. We use these because we believe they're faster and more efficient to construct the roadway and mobility improvements that enhance the overall transportation system. Not everything's eligible, we're only talking about construction costs above the minimum, the baseline requirements by the land development code. Also, these Code. Also, these roads have to be on our Framework Street map, and right-of-way acquisition to build these roads is also eligible. So, what we're talking about, baseline, this is what we're talking about. It's, this is the land development code minimum, drive, travel lanes, sidewalks, small, median. But when we want to build these framework roads, we want them to be bigger, we want them to have more capacity for transportation. So, this baseline, not eligible for mobility fee credits. What is eligible when we're going above and beyond that, when we have bike lanes, when we have wider medians, we have wider sidewalks, parking, or sometimes even additional travel lanes. So, I'm going to run through a quick example here. So, developer comes in, and they're building a framework road, so they're responsible for the baseline. That's the $7.5 million, that's what they're responsible to do. The county and the city work together, we say, this is a framework road, this is what we want, we want four lanes, we want wider sidewalks, wider medians. So, and these are just estimates. So, the total construction cost of the framework road with the four travel lanes is 15.5 million. How we come up with the city's obligation is we have the total construction cost minus what the developer has to build, which is the baseline, and then it comes up with the eight million, that's mobility fee credits, that's not money we have to pay, that's, we're not charging that to the developer. And these are all just estimates. So, when we look at, you know, is building a road now versus building later, what's more efficient, what's more cost-effective? So, the scenario one, this is building a four-lane road, one mile, through a tri-party transportation agreement. This is what I went through earlier. Total construction cost is 15.5 million, the city's obligation would be eight million, the developer has to pay 7.5 million. Another way to do it would be to have the developer just put in the baseline, that's the 7.5. They build that, the two lanes, and the city does not have to give any credits, they would collect those mobility fees. But 10 years later, we decide, we need to build the other two travel lanes now, we need to build bike lanes, we need to build wider sidewalks, going from a two-lane to a four-lane, it's very expensive. So, that's when, and it would be entirely up to the city to, the city's responsibility to widen that road. So, we're looking at 20.5 million. Now, these are just estimates, but from a build-now, build-later scenario, scenario one's the agreement, we've got eight million dollars in mobility fee credits versus waiting 10 years, widening the road ourselves, costs 20.5 million. Now, there's a couple of things to keep in mind, just beyond the cost difference. It's a lot easier to build a road in Greenland when there's not a bunch of different, not a bunch of residents around. If we're widening later, we've got traffic on the road, there's safety issues, there could be right-of-way issues, there could be utility relocations. It's just more difficult to build a road when it's under operation. So, how are these credits applied? We're going to take the example just a little further. So, this development, who has to build the one-mile, four-lane road, has 1,000 single-family units. That generates 13.8 million dollars in mobility fees. We subtract the city's obligation for building the bigger road, the city still receives 5.8 in mobility fees once the project is done building. And this is the percentage that we've shown in past tri-party transportation agreements. The city collects 5.8 million dollars from the 13.8 generated. We get the four-lane road. The city still collects 4.6 million dollars for mobility fees for the city. We have to give a portion to Osceola County, 20% of what we collect, so that'd be 1.2 million, and that's for roadway improvements of roads within the city limits. So, that's Old Canoe Creek Road, Canoe Creek Road, Narkusi. So, the percentages vary, they can vary from many different factors, the size of the development, how many homes they're building, whether it's townhomes, single-family homes, apartments, if there's commercial, it's what roads they have to build. We look at the transportation network map, there could be four roads they have to build, that'd be a lot of city obligation potentially, or if it's just one road, it could be a smaller percentage. And here's the mobility fee district map. The city of St. Cloud is its own mobility fee district. Any mobility fees that are collected within the city limits must be spent within the city limits. That applies to both the city and the county. And then Mariema's going to take over.
So, in working with our community development and public works departments about the mobility fees and providing some clarification to council after you guys had asked questions at a previous meeting, we realized and talked about internally with staff that we also need to provide education and explanation to our community about mobility fees, how they work, the philosophies behind them, and so forth. So, we have worked on putting together a draft plan of potential strategies for how we're going to do that. We have Transportation Tuesdays that we frequently post on social media, so we would look at doing several of those as we go on the next several weeks and so forth. And these can include graphics or text or video type of content to explain different pieces and elements of this. We've talked about doing podcasts again with our staff to talk about how these work and the theories behind them and how they work and what they mean. We'll be developing webpage content. We will incorporate this also into our Citizens Academy program so that we can kind of give people more of a deep dive into that. We can incorporate some of the video content to our lobby screens throughout City Hall. And anytime where we're doing news releases, where we talk about the city's granting mobility fee credits for developments, take a few sentences to kind of explain what that means and how it works, just to provide more context and clarity on that. And we'll also be adding it to our Citizens Guide when we update that next.
Thank you, Mariema. Deputy Mayor Gilbert?
Cameron, just some clarifications. We look at widening roads, and then we look at eminent domain during those widening roads, so that's a cost also. A perfect example I look at is Narkusi Road, right after you get to Osceola County, it goes from three lanes to two lanes, and that's where the congestion starts. Also, what, correct me if I'm wrong, when a developer comes in, they already have the people in place, the contractors in place to do that. So, when we do that, it usually is a cost savings because they're already there on site, and the area's dug up that way. Is that correct? Am I assuming that, or?
Yes, that's correct. It's one of the ways they're more efficient, you know, instead of the city having to spend staff time managing all these different contracts, and there's certain things that a private developer could do quicker than a city government.
We realize as citizens, and also I assume the council realizes, the congested areas that we have here. What you're telling me is, we're planning for the future, so our future generations, our kids and our kids' kids, won't have the congestion because we're building out, instead of building to the standard set. So, now we're looking for the future as the growth of Osceola County and St. Cloud. Is that correct, too?
Yes, that's correct. We've got the transportation network map, we know where we need to build the roads, what size they need to be. We're trying to build them now as opposed to later in the future when it's more difficult to build roads.
And the last thing, this is not affected at all by the $2.3 billion that the Metro Plan has set aside for Osceola County for future roads and roadways. In effect, Metro Plan includes Osceola Orange and Seminole County. We were just awarded $2.3 billion, I think was what that number is. Am I still on the same page?
So, Osceola County, we're going through, with the city, Osceola County, we work with Metro Plan, we're developing the 2050 Transportation Master Plan with them. We're developing how much money that Metro Plan's going to give to different types of projects, and widening projects is one of them, yes.
And when you say 2050, that's 25 years we're planning out. I happen to be a board member of Metro Plan, and in 25 years, I won't be around, but there will be my kids and grandkids that will be here to utilize what we're trying to do today, looking for the future. But we also have that need for right now, today, so I appreciate your presentation. I yield back to you, Mayor.
Yes, sir, thank you. And Councilmember Paul?
So, I want to say thank you, Cameron, for sharing this information. I think it's very informative for the community to understand what roads belong to the city, what's the county, and what's the state, because I see a lot of comments about, you know, people wanting roads fixed, and then you look at the road they're referring to, it ends up being a county road. So, thank you for sharing this to the public to help them understand what roads belong to each government agency. Thank you.
Thank you. We have a website on the city's webs, we have a map on the city's website where you can look at all the different roads within the city limits, and it'll show you the, who's the maintenance responsible for all the different roads. You can click on it, and it even tell you who to reach out for if you have a problem with it. Very cool. Thank you, Cameron. Thank you, Mariema. City Manager?
Thank you. At the last council meeting, there was direction from the city council wanting us to standardize a percentage of how much of a mobility fee credit we would be giving, which was part of why we brought this item forward tonight. From a staff perspective, it's more of a case-by-case scenario, but after we had this session, I was looking to see if that was still the same direction, or if council agrees that it would be more of a case-by-case scenario.
I think you know my thoughts on it, at least. A case-by-case scenario is the appropriate way to look at it, and, yeah, that's...
Yeah, I was the member that looked at percentages-wise, but I understand different projects have different needs, and connectivity is our biggest factor. And what I've liked with what we're doing here and what we're doing in Metro Plan is just that connectivity. That's very important to get from one way to another. So, I was the council person that brought that up. I have been explained to it, different projects have different needs. So, I'm in agreeance with the mayor on that, so I yield back to you, Mayor.
Yeah, and it is nice to know what percentage is on each one, what goes back, and...
We'll continue to include the percentages in our backup, thank you, and I saw that there was consensus on that. Thank you.
Thank you. Is that it, Cameron? Thank you, sir, appreciate you. And thank you, Mariema. I know you did all the slides. All right, next portion of tonight's meeting is Consent Agenda, which contains items that have been determined to be routine and non-controversial. If anyone in the audience wishes to address a particular item on the consent agenda, now's the opportunity for you to do so. Additionally, if staff members, if staff or members of the city council wish to speak on a consent item, they have the same opportunity. And council, are there any items you'd like to pull off to discuss? City Manager?
Thank you, Mayor. I have two corrections. Item number one, there's a printout that was sitting at each of your seats. The agenda cover sheet is correct, I'm sorry, the agenda itself is correct, the backup is correct, except on the item description written by staff. Unfortunately, we made a mistake on the calculations in that one paragraph of the budget and recommendation, so I just put a correction at each of your seats so that you can see that. Total project cost has not changed. And then for item number five, it's a good mistake. I am told that the grant application for the St. Cloud Police Department to get the quadruped police patrol robot, and we...
The dog.
The dog, yes. We thought that it was a 25 percent...
Can it be a goat?
Yeah. We thought that it was a 25% match, and so that's what we included, but it's, there's actually no match. So, it was a good mistake, better for us. Thank you, if we get it.
Very cool. I like no match. All right, would anyone in the audience like to speak on any of the agenda items?
Consent items.
Consent items, I apologize. And council? If we have nothing, can we get a motion?
Motion to approve the consent agenda.
Motion to approve consent agenda from Councilmember Urban.
Second.
Second from Councilmember Paul. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Paul?
Aye.
Councilmember Urban?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Gilbert?
Aye.
Councilmember Fletcher?
Aye.
Mayor Robertson?
Aye.
Motion carries five zero.
All right, next up is the Citizens Forum. Any person who desires to comment on any item not on this agenda has provided this opportunity to address city council. Each person is requested complete a signed in form to be provided to the presiding officer prior to or as soon as practical thereafter. The person addresses the council. First up, we have Ricardo Watson. No, I apologize, give me one second. That is public hearings. We have David Kastner.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, councilmembers.
Time's up.
Already?
And we have Carlton Davidson and Josh Steinkamp as well.
Good morning, Mayor, members of city council, thank you for your time. My name is Joshua Steinkamp. On behalf of the St. Cloud Veterans Council, I'm here to propose Soldier City Sundays. This is a weekly market designed to actively revitalize our community, provide meaningful support for our veterans, and celebrate a unique heritage of our city. We propose a lively, family-friendly market to be held every Sunday from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. at Veterans Park, starting on November 9th of this year. This event will serve as a central hub, bringing together local businesses, diverse vendors, and live entertainment to create a consistent, vibrant gathering space. A core component of this initiative is the commitment to veterans' community. We plan to dedicate tents to veteran-focused resources and local vendors. This is a powerful way to not only show our gratitude, but also provide direct, tangible assistance and a clear point of contact for those who have served. Soldier City Sundays will be a true community-led effort. We will feature live performances from high schools, ROTC, local artists, as well as educational speakers from our police, fire, and military communities. These partnerships will help build a stronger ties and foster a deeper sense of public connection. This project also offers a unique, with two significant upcoming events. Next year is the 250th anniversary of the United States, and will be our city's Veterans Day Parade in 2026. Launching this market is an ideal way to build the celebratory year to honor our historic motto, Soldier City. To bring this vision alive, we need the city's partnership and formal approval of this weekly event. We are confident that the market will not only support our local economy, but also strengthen community bonds. Thank you for your time and considering this proposal. Any questions?
Very cool, thank you, Josh.
Name's Carlton Davidson. I'm a director of Veterans and Community Outreach for Soldier Refuge. We're a faith-based, whole-family, veteran, first responder, whole-family fellowship and community outreach organization. I have a list, a vast list, of veteran organizations, first responders, individuals that are already excited to be able to join in on this, and I'll be sharing everything I have and anything you all need, you know, to make this happen.
Very cool, thank you, sir.
Hi, everyone, I'm David Kastner. I'm also a member of the Veterans Council. I'm a veteran myself. I served over in Iraq, and I was over there for about two years, 2006, 2007-ish. I just hope to directly support my fellow veterans here in the city, as well as the council and everybody else, and that's going to be my contribution to it. Is there any questions?
Thank you. Well, first, thank you all for being a part of this. Council, as you know, this was the brainchild of this council. You know, we all kind of came together. We knew we had a need for, to get veteran resources out there. Also, we have a need to have a farmer's market. We like to have activities out there for the citizens. And, you know, gosh, I think we're going back to February when we all started talking about this. And these are, obviously, the members on this council, these are ones that we selected, and they've been doing an amazing job. We met last month, we're going to have our second meeting tomorrow, and it's all really coming together quite well. And so, I think November 9th, we're going to be kicking this thing off. Do you want to talk about the first, what we're going to do during these events, like November 9th? I know it's going to be a little different November 9th.
Excuse me. So, I've already actually put the first wave of emails out to some of the resource groups that I know personally, and I'm already getting some feedback, Transition House, and quite a few others that are eager to jump in. And I know we're talking about the community, you know, our family's been here for almost 40 years, graduated, brother, sister, father, everybody, been teachers and everything. I'm a Marine also, you know, did my time and came home. It's just Soldier City. But the community's big for us. It's big for the Davidsons, it's big for this town, and Soldier City is what we remember. And, you know, the history that we have here, bringing it together as one. The event, you know, is in the beginning phases. You know, I have probably about 200, 300 other groups. I got contacts with the...
I got contacts within the VA, got contacts here, local, Nona, Baldwin, Jacksonville, Tampa, and a whole lot of other groups that be, I'll be sending this word out and be able to bring those veterans here, bring their families here. Looking forward to it.
Very cool. And I'll go ahead and update you all along with the council. So today, we had a board meeting with the St. Cloud Citizens Foundation, and we voted to spend up to $5,000 to help renovate that park, you know, put some, some paint on the band shell, the equipment. We got the paint color schemes today from Stephanie. Stephanie's here, thank you, wherever she is. And so we're going to go buy a bunch of paint with that and we'll get us volunteers. Dan said. Carlton's the only one allowed on the ladder?
No, I did not.
I'm the only one allowed on the ladder. No, I'm excited. I mean, you guys have brought some great ideas to the table and really, it's coming together, and we can't do it without the citizen or the Veterans Council to go out there and make it happen. So the Citizens Foundation is going to be the mechanism where, you know, we can, we can give some seed money and get this thing off the ground and, and kind of get this thing going for the citizens. And November 9th, so we're talking about Soldier City Sundays, but November 9th, you know, that falls within the Veterans Day celebration. So instead of doing a parade, which we've alternated between St. Cloud and Kissimmee with the parades here in this community, but instead of a parade this year because we're, the time constraints, of course, I wanted to do it, but these guys were like putting the brakes on it. But I agree, because we do want to do it right. But instead of that, we're going to do static displays. And I walked out there and thanks to Scott and Stephanie Holtkamp, the Parks and Rec Director, we walked out there last week, kind of stayed, scoped out some sites for the static displays. So instead of parade floats, we can have those same vehicles or tent setups, table setups. Instead of going in a parade or along the road, we'll just have it set up, the static display. So we're going to have a great event out there, and it'll just continue on every Sunday. So.
Well, that was a good important part. Our agenda is to work within the city with a lot of city members, a lot of city resident veterans, and have this event every single Sunday and just build upon it. And just make it as big of an event as we can.
Awesome.
And obviously with your guys' support and your guys' direction.
Okay. And yeah, I'm going to go ahead and, I'm going to ask Scott, the deputy city manager, to come up here and we're going to, he's going to explain some of the expenses. As a city event, it's going to cost us a little bit of money to get, to get this thing going, so.
Good evening, mayor and city council. Scott Davidoff, deputy city manager. Mayor, as you stated, we've been looking at this and finding a way to make this be as successful an event as possible and what city resources may be required to help get this started, at least from the beginning, to make sure everything gets off on the right foot, that we can provide kind of that push to make sure that the committee has the resources that they need. We're actually going to be meeting tomorrow with the committee to talk about the exact setup, what this is going to look like, what some of those needs are. But as we talk about some of those immediate needs that we know at this point, we're talking about portlets that would need to be out there for the special events, and those come to approximately $350 per event for the two portlets that would be needed out there in addition to the existing restrooms, as well as some staff support that if the events and the committee chooses so, on the staff support, you're looking at approximately $280 based on the timeframe that you're looking at having these events. So that's $630, $650 per week, somewhere in that timeframe. We also have, the city had already been planning on November 1st to hold a veterans' resource event at the same location, and what we're looking to do is to combine these two events and move these resources over to the Veterans Council event and the new Soldier City Sundays to help provide that and give some more resources to get things off the top. So there was $3,000 that had been budgeted for that event specifically. That includes some of the staffing and the resources that, that were part of that event. So staff would be looking for direction on allocating those funds. We can certainly get back to the city council following the meetings with the Veterans Council tomorrow, and as we continue along on this journey, making this a great event for the community, a little bit of a better idea once we are able to iron out some of those details. But we know some of these prices already and what some of those costs would be at this point.
Okay. Do we want to go ahead and get the blessing tonight or wait for another month to, on moving forward with any expense?
Sure. I think it would be helpful to get some direction this evening. Certainly, council can, can make any decisions that you all wish, but I think it would be helpful to have some direction at this point. That way, both the city and the Veterans Council have some good ideas for tomorrow when we meet and making sure that we can plan the event, again, with, with everybody's best foot forward.
Yes, sir. Council member Urban.
I love the idea. I think this is great. It's going to be an awesome thing for our city. My question is, I guess, maybe this is a legal question, but can we get sponsorships to help pay for some of these expenses?
Yes. We're going to, that's part of the discussion we've had initially, so we'll, we'll be able to work through that.
Good.
Yeah, as you know, we've got the, on the Veterans Council, we've got the chambers, the Ossio of the St. Cloud. Of course, we've got some, some other people we'd like to jump on board and sponsor. Council, deputy mayor Gilbert.
Yeah, this may be brought up later on during this meeting, mayor, but back some time ago, maybe eight or nine months ago, I suggested that we take the fences from the veterans and move them in so we can have parking available for these events, because I truly believe these are going to be large events. And we had talked about that at an earlier council meeting, and I, I don't know the exact date, but I think this is going to tie in with it because we're going to be able to allow to have parking. I thought it was 48 more structures. I might be mistaken on that. But keep in mind that that would help these events and all events at the Veteran Council, and I yield back to you, mayor.
Yes, sir. Yeah, I've spoken with staff on that. I think we looked at some numbers. I think you, we just got some numbers on that.
Yes, sir. You're, you're correct. There were three options that the city had looked at. One of those was relocating everything, to move everything in the fences. You've got fences on the backside on 14th, and then you have fences on both New York and Pennsylvania avenues. So staff went out, took a look at it. We can move those fences in somewhere 10 to 12 feet in, in that ballpark that would provide that additional parking space there. If we were to do that on the, excuse me, the south side, on the 14th Street side, that fence had been moved in a few years ago and was converted to a black vinyl fence that's out there. So the two options that we had, that we spoke and, and got some quotes on, were to move the fences in on the two sides, on the New York and on the Pennsylvania sides, we'd be able to move those in. If we were to maintain a similar style of fence that's out there now, where it's the metal with the spear tops to it, that, that has that more traditional look and the traditional feel to it, the total cost for the demolition and installation of the fence, somewhere in the ballpark between $50,000 and $60,000. And if we were to make that black vinyl around and, and go away from the look that it has now, so it would be different on this, the street that fronts 192 there, that would be somewhere between $30,000 and $38,000. Now, there would be some additional costs for, for curbing and some, some small additional costs as well, but that's the pricing that we have right now from our contractor.
Yes, sir. That's a lot of money. Maybe we kind of see how it fills out and create a bigger problem, if that makes sense? Like, see if it truly becomes. I know there's some property owners nearby that, that would like, or allow us to, to use their parking. So I think we already have, through Parks and Rec, I think there's some, some understandings on the other side of Pennsylvania. So is that accurate?
Yes, sir. That, that's what staff has been working on. Yes, sir.
All right. So I guess we need to give Scott direction on this with the deputy mayor, deputy city manager.
No, thank you.
Ditto. All right. I appreciate y'all's comments for this and the support. Of course, this is, y'all are a part of this too. It's such an amazing group, guys, David, Carlton, and Josh. Thank y'all very much for, for being a part of this and, and the rest of them as well. So do we just need consensus or are we going to? There's not really something we vote on, on this, just given consensus that we're moving forward with.
Well, I think the, the, the main thing that staff was looking at, we do need to know is, does the council, is the council okay with considering these events as really essentially city events? Right? So that city staff would be involved in it and we'd work through it the way you would as if the city were putting on the, putting on the events and work with the Veterans Council.
Correct. With the Veterans Council still leading everything and being the agency that's there, the city staff would be able to provide any support, any resources that the council, the veterans committee would need during that timeframe, along with any of the funding that would be required, at least to, to get things up and running and, and throughout the course as the, the council sees fit.
All right. Council member Paul.
No, I wanted to say thank you to the gentleman who spoke and those that are also on the Veterans Council. I think this is a great idea and I fully support it, and I also love the Soldier City name. Thank you.
Yeah. I believe it should be a city event. I think this is a, obviously, the St. Cloud Veterans Council operates underneath the city council. They were appointed by the city council, and they're an amazing group. I mean, everybody comes from different backgrounds and, as Carlton said, he, he brings a lot of the vendors and Josh brings a lot of the entertainment and, and David's a veteran, but he's been around the events and, and working here with the city for years. So, you know, we've got Steve Montiere from Channel 6. So we kind of, we got people on there from different backgrounds that really put together an amazing team and, and I, we don't hope to, we hope not to drain a lot of city resources. You know, obviously, it sounds like two portlets and the, what else was going to be the cost?
And staffing, the trash, we already have that taken care of. Yes, sir.
You know, $750, $700, I think.
Somewhere in that ballpark. Yes, sir.
A week. And we anticipate that there will be some fundraising through this, as well as the sponsorships that council member Urban had, had suggested. So that, that's my take on it. I think we can, it's, it's actually, we're taking, there's $3,000 from the earlier November event.
Yes, sir. That's correct.
That we can start applying towards some of these.
Yes, sir.
Okay. City attorney.
Yeah, I just, and the, the second part, I was going to say, when you, when I was asked that question was, so if, as we talked about when the Veterans Council was met and when we had the meeting with them, we did say that if there was going to be any formal commitment to do, it would have to be approved by the city council, right? So one of the pieces is, is the intent was, as put together by the committee, was to have these every, essentially every Sunday at the Veterans Park. So we would need, we need confirmation that the city council is okay with that, for that, and so that staff can move forward with putting this, essentially a farmer's market and these attendant events every Sunday as part of the direction or the second suggestion from the Veterans Commission. So that's, we need, we would need some specific direction on that tonight so that staff can plan accordingly.
Okay. Yeah, it's my belief, we need to start bringing that park back to life, and, and I think the city staff does help make a successful event. I believe that that's, it's important that, that the city is involved with this, and, you know, we have not had the, the best successes in standalone farmer's markets throughout the years. And I think that having a Veterans Park, along with the veteran resources and activities for the families and entertainment on the stage and, you know, somebody singing the National Anthem and, and the color guard up there. I think putting it all together and just giving the people in our community four or five hours a week is not too much to, for the city to put out there and, and give back. So that's my view on it.
So council's good with the event, working towards the event every Sunday?
I definitely am.
At Veterans Park. That's a week. I think that's, that's what staff needs, some direction on that. Okay?
Good.
All right.
Thank you, Scott. Appreciate you. Josh, David, Carlton, appreciate you guys very much.
Thank you so much.
Yeah, thank you. Y'all have a good night. Thank you. All right. Next up, we have Janelle Stout.
Hi, my name is Janelle Stout, and I am a member of Grace Community Church located at 5501 East Earl O'Brien Memorial Highway in St. Cloud. We are currently in the process of planning and hopefully building a new sanctuary on our property. I wanted to take this opportunity to express my appreciation for the many people that I have interacted with over the last four months or so. These include several City of St. Cloud staff members, planning commission members, and city council members. I have had questions regarding zoning, pre-op meetings, annexations, future land use, impact fees, payments, online resources, and others. Each person, without exception, has answered every question I have had with knowledge, promptness, and kindness.
I know. So I don't hate to interrupt.
She's not speaking on the item. She's praising the staff.
Yeah.
Thank you.
I'm sorry.
I didn't mean, I don't want to interrupt compliments for staff, but.
I understand. I would love to list the names of everyone who has helped me along this path, but I know I would miss someone, and I don't want to do that. In addition, for everyone that I might name, I'm sure there are others that have helped them help me. I'm grateful to staff and others who serve the City of St. Cloud to the best of their ability and help people like me, who are not nearly as knowledgeable as they, navigate the system of this city government. Thank you.
Thank you, Janelle. All right. Would anyone else in the audience like to speak during the citizens forum? Come on up, sir. Jerem, are you want to come up?
I'll hand the microphone to him.
Yeah, there's a microphone right by the, by the clerk. Thank you, Mr. Furtick.
I've got a pretty good voice.
It's, he's going to bring a microphone. I don't know if you can squeeze it.
I can't even hold it, so. Gordon Brown, New York Avenue, and I didn't prepare it tonight, but I didn't know I'd be allowed to talk.
Absolutely.
But I would like to address what I consider ineptitude of both the builder and the city on this old hotel, and I would like to do anything I can in my power to get windows put in that building and scaffolding removed, and then get that owner off the project. He, I mean, it's a joke. Do you really want to have the centerpiece of the town going on for the next 10 years?
Yes, sir. I believe that there is now an active building permit again. Is that correct? Yeah, but they're just renewing it. Hold on, sir. Let me just, let me ask the city attorney.
My understanding, there's an, there's an application to renew the, the existing permit that expired, and staff is working on an application, the building department is, for a new permit.
But you know, I thought, oh, sir. I, I thought a month or two ago, there was a, they activated a permit again or?
No, the permit expired and they filed an application to renew the permit. And they're in the process of reviewing it now.
Council member Urban.
I just wanted to say, I share this gentleman's sentiments. I'm, I'm sick and tired of, of looking out our window here and seeing the, the St. Cloud eyesore, and, and something has got to be done with this owner who has dragged this along for as long as I've been on the city council and for pretty much as long as I can remember being, being here in the City of St. Cloud. So we've, we've got, if, if they can't get their permit and start active construction daily, we've got to start giving ramifications to them. So I, I feel your sentiment, sir.
Yes, sir. Gordon.
The city has no obligation to give him a permit. Why in the world do they keep allowing him to renew it? So he can keep looking at the damn scaffolding and the garbage and, you know, I, I'm just fascinated that you all have allowed this to go on this long.
Well, I've been on for about nine and a half months, so I understand it's been going on for 10 years. So, yeah, yeah, I, I know.
I hear longer numbers than that.
Okay. I've seen it go back and forth where the city was actually contributing money towards it and it's, and taking it away, so, or get, the, the owner decided not to utilize the[1714.68] the money. So, there's a lot of deals. I know they've been given a lot of leeway, but we need to let the city kind of work through those, those legal issues.
I used to be a builder and I'll bet my bottom dollar that it will never be a functioning hotel.
Well, I hope you're wrong. I really hope to see it come back to life and.
You said, "I can't interrupt you." You interrupted me. I'll bet my last dollar that it will not be a functioning hotel. I would suggest working with the builder or a new owner to maybe fix the ground floor in that little restaurant section and then just lock the doors on the upper part until somebody has proper money and proper staffing. Was there a performance bond put up for that hotel? You know, when you do large structures, there's meant to be a performance bond if they can't complete the project. So, that's where I'm at.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate you. All right, anyone else in the audience like to speak?
I would.
Jerem, you going to walk around with a mic?
Jerem Furtick, 50, Furtick Road. How y'all doing tonight? I just got a couple of questions. The, I came home to my street once again being bored with, it started with, let's see, wasn't Central Link, Spectrum, now it's T-Mobile. And it was before that, there was one more. There's three different borings going down to the end of my road. So, it got me thinking. I'm like, why are we allowing each company to come in with their streaming, their fiber optic, and they're boring both sides of the street, hitting telecommunications every time they come through? Why wouldn't the city put in one big bore and then make money off it? Charge these telecom or streaming services money to use your cavity that you have in the ground? Because right now, they're destroying more stuff than what it's worth. And guess what? Out of the three that's came down, no one's even on them. So, I don't understand why we're allowing them to destroy and put stuff in the ground and we have no control over it. Do we have a plan, a master plan for, and how many more are coming?
City Attorney, do you?
Well.
I've heard comments from, from citizens and I've seen them behind my own building just running wire. I don't know who it is or.
My understanding is the telecommunication infrastructure is being placed in existing public utility easements which they are allowed to utilize. That's what those easements were put there. The issue over a local government's control over telecommunications changed several years ago when the legislature essentially prohibited, prohibited individual local governments from doing what Mr. Furtick had suggested. We are, the city shares in what's referred to as a telecommunication tax, which is paid by the companies to the state, and then we are paid a piece for it. We used to have what's referred to as franchise agreements. So, every, every, every telecommunication company or cable company that operate in the city had to have a franchise agreement through which we could control the things that Mr. Furtick is talking about right now. But we don't have the ability to do that. And as long as they are operating in that public utility easement that's been placed, there's very little the city can do about it.
So, do we know how many are coming?
I have no idea.
Because I have three dead ends down there just right now, just to let you know. So, the fiber optic lines are sitting there, three of them. And they told me there could be three more?
I've only known of three, Mr. Feldlinger. Yeah, we've, we've only had three people that have applied for the permits.
Okay, because he seemed like he knew that there was at least three more coming.
And you said Spectrum, T-Mobile, and another one?
Quantum, I think, quantum.
No, that one hasn't came, so I'm looking forward to them coming to my yard. And then, so the other thing is, I have an issue with my road, which I can talk to you all after. It is a private road that I set, I maintain.
You can keep going.
For, I had to open the road and maintain this road and even sign off that the fire truck cannot come down to my house. So, I have all these things in place with the county when the county used to own the road. Now, I guess the city owns the whole road. Where does that make everything that I have signed in the past? Is that agreement still in place? I have 760 foot that I maintain. But you're boring and doing whatever you want on my maintained road. That was considered a private drive.
This is Furtick Pass, but we can talk about later. You said you got more information on that.
But just if we can get information gathered, if we have the conversation, be great because it would be neat to see where that is. Let's see, future land use, I'd like to ask this question about future land use stuff. Agriculture, when you're changing it to future land use, is there any teeth in this to force people in the future to stop doing agriculture?
No, I believe with Matt Walters, were you with that group as well, with Matt and Heath White and all those guys when they came up with the code or helped come up with that?
Yeah, we, we put language to support agriculture.
Right.
And none of that's being removed.
I know. I'm just saying, there's nothing in there that's going to cause it to disappear, right?
No, no, I wish we could do things to encourage it more in our community.
Okay.
I think we need to talk about that down the road, what we can do, even though things are being developed, you know, to still encourage agriculture.
Is there, is there something on the site, the city site, that I can look at the connector roads that they were talking about tonight? The main roads that they want to widen and keep connected to the city, is that open to the public?
Did Cameron leave us already?
So, there is, there is a map of road.
I think that's what Cameron said.
So, what was the term he used for the roads that y'all want to widen?
Framework.
Framework, so there, that's on the map that shows?
There's definitely a map that shows the city and the county responsibilities. There's a new GIS hub, so I'm not familiar with every single map that's on there. Melissa, are you in here? Do you know, have we added the framework streets?
I think so.
If not, we'll get you a copy of it.
That'd be great. And then, if we are talking roads and future stuff of roads, turn-in lanes, why are we letting all these developments go in with no turn-in lanes? I mean, it's a lot of vehicles that are stopping on a main road that's not supposed to stop to turn. So, if we're looking at future roads, that would be great to look at. I don't know what the code says about it, but it'd be nice to push the builders to put in turn-in lanes off main highways that are not stopping and going. And one more last thing and then I'll be out of your hair. If you don't let, like if the developers come in with mobility stuff, even if you don't build the road, take the land from them, widen enough to build your future roads for connectivity. Because I think what you're saying, you're urban, you know, all the direction of road connectivity is important. So, it's not always you have to build it right then, but leave enough room to build it down the road.
The way we don't have to buy it later.
Correct. Force them into giving you the road that you want, your framework road. That's all I have. Y'all have a good evening.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Jerem.
All right, anyone else in the audience like to speak during the public comment?
I'm Leroy Price. I live at 2750 Clay Whaley Road. I talked to a lot of my neighbors in the area. We're concerned about this change of land use on our street. The situation is.
City Attorney.
This is one of the items, these are items that have been continued to the October 9th meeting.
Yeah, you know, the future land use changes, that's going to be at the October 9th meeting.
The next meeting?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
The October 9th meeting.
Yeah, October 9th.
Yes, at the next meeting.
Yeah.
All right, anyone else in the audience? Okay, thank, yes, sir. Just speak right from the podium. And name an address for the record, please.
Yes, my name is Paul Passos, 2130 Empire Drive. I'm writing to formally write serius.
It's all right, take your time. We're not going anywhere. Sir, are you okay?
We can translate for you.
All right, thank you. All right. And next up, we have public hearings. And will the clerk please read item number one?
First of two public hearings for resolution number 2025-097R, a resolution, a resolution of the City Council of City of St. Cloud, Florida, establishing a final ad valorem tax millage for the City of St. Cloud for fiscal year 2025, 2026, the same being adopted prior to the adoption of the final budget of for said period.
Your mic's not on. Hey, Jay, Deborah.
Hello.
Yep.
There we go. Jeff Cooper, Finance Director. As per Florida statute 200.065, two public hearings are required in order to adopt a final ad valorem tax millage of 5.1128, which is 6.27% above the rollback rate of 4.811. As a reminder, the rollback rate is the rate that would generate the same tax dollars assessed as the previous tax year, not including new construction. The increase in taxable values for existing properties is not considered for ad valorem tax. So, the key takeaways for the citizens is one mil equals $1 in tax per $1,000 of assessed value. Property taxes are calculated by multiplying the assessed taxable property value by the millage rate and then dividing by 1,000. So, an example would be with our proposed millage rate of 5.1128 and a property tax value of $100,000, for simplicity's sake, would create a tax bill from the City of St. Cloud of $511.28. So, our proposed millage, again, for the 13th consecutive year with no increase is 5.1128. Taxable value of 300,000 would result in annual city ad valorem taxes of $1,534. So, for the general fund, these are the budget highlights, the budget increases of the fiscal year 25, 26 budget. There's a 1% cost of living increase and a 3% pay adjustment for all non-public safety union members, and that equates to 1.144 million. Our public safety union contracts, which are also in line to get the same 1% cost of living increase and a 3% pay adjustment of 834,925. We are proposing 13 new positions, eight of which are public safety, six of which are police officers for 1,259,392. We have an increase in police and fire operating costs of 1.2 million, an increase in public safety pension contribution costs of nearly 1.5 million, and an increase in health benefit costs for all staff of $474,805. These are the proposed general fund positions, as I mentioned, two new school resource officers, four new police officers, a public educator slash inspector, an associate planner, two maintenance workers for streets, one senior trades worker for bricks, a part-time park ranger, and a part-time grants assistant. So, staff are recommending approval of resolution 2025-097R and we're requesting your approval of the same resolution. Any questions?
Dan, I got a quick question. How come this is on the, the public hearings and not on the first readings?
Because by statute, you're required to have two, actual two formal public hearings on it. So, you're not taking final action on these items tonight. However, you do have to, we, we are, they're set for advertised public hearings, so the public has an opportunity to address them now, as well as they'll have an opportunity to address them on September 18th, when these things come back.
Okay.
So, this notice was advertised on everyone's trim notice. The next one, next meeting on next Thursday will be advertised in the Orlando Sentinel on Sunday.
Okay, so with this one, we, under the typical first readings, we don't do public comment, but with this, we have to allow public comment on this.
You have to. That's why it's, it's on the public hearing portion of the agenda.
Okay, thank you. All right, thank you, Jeff.
And we have some in the audience that like to speak on this, Ricardo Watson.
Good evening. Ricardo Watson, 2371 Kings Crest Road. I believe this is it here. All right. I'm property owner at Kings Crest subdivision. I rise today to formally object to the inclusion of my property in the City of St. Cloud tax base. On my 2025 trim notice, the OCL County, the City of St. Cloud millage rate and related non-ad valorem assessments have been applied to my property. However, the annexation of Kings Crest into the City of St. Cloud is still under active litigation in OCL County courts. Until that case is resolved, the city has no lawful authority to impose municipal taxes or assessment on my property. The inclusion of these charges is premature, unauthorized, and creates irreparable harm by imposing financial burdens before the legal question of annexation has been decided. The trim notice itself is evidence that the city is acting beyond its lawful jurisdiction, contrary to both Florida statutes and constitutional protections. Accordingly, I respectfully demand that the city remove City of St. Cloud millage and related assessments from my property 2025 tax obligation until annexation is lawfully established. It's not established yet. My great grandfather, my greatest grandfather said, "They that forsake the law, praise the wicked, but such as keep the law contend with them." I request my objection to be entered into the official record of this hearing. I also have a written objection that I would like to also place in the record.
You can give it to the city clerk, your say as you're done, sir.
All right. And that'll be it for me. Yeah, city clerk?
Thank you.
Thank you. And just so much you know, I do have your oath of offices.
Thank you, sir.
All right. And it will be used against you if you do not follow what your oath told you to do.
Thanks, sir. Please give to.
All right, thank you.
Please give to the officer. He can hand it to the clerk, sir. Please give to the officer, sir. Ricardo, there you go.
Thank you.
And anyone else in the audience like to speak on this item? Are you in the audience? You have some more to say?
It's still my turn.
All right, and council have any, any discussion? All right, can we get a motion?
Motion approved.
Motion approved. Deputy Mayor Gilbert.
Second.
Second from Councilmember Urban. Madam clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Urban?
Aye.
And Deputy Mayor Gilbert?
Aye.
Councilmember Fletcher?
Aye.
Councilmember Paul?
Aye.
Mayor Robertson?
Aye.
Motion carries 5-0.
And will the clerk please read item number two into the record?
First of two public hearings for resolution number 2025-098R, a resolution of the City Council of the City of St. Cloud, Florida, establishing a final budget for the City of St. Cloud for fiscal year 2025, 2026, and the same being adopted following the adoption of the final, final millage rate for said period.
Jeff Cooper, Finance Director. As per Florida statute 166.241, the city is required to adopt a budget each fiscal year by ordinance or resolution. The amount available from taxation and other sources, including balances brought forward from prior fiscal years, must equal the total appropriation for expenditures and reserves. In other words, the adopted budget must balance, which it does. So, this year's total city budget is a decrease of 31.5% from the fiscal year 2024, 2025 adjusted budget. Also, a note, with the exception of police, fire, and information technology, all general fund budgets decreased, operating budgets decreased from '24, '25 original budgets. So, here's a breakdown of expenditures and millions for this fiscal year 2025, 2026 is 214.8 million dollars. As you can see, 87.9 million of that total, or 41%, is the general fund. Special revenue funds account for 29%. Enterprise funds account for 15%. And then, internal service fund, capital projects and debt service. The enterprise funds, for the people in the audience, for us are the sanitation, stormwater, and building permit funds. Those are separate from the general fund and not funded with your tax dollars. This is a general fund revenue breakdown. So, it's important to note that ad valorem taxes account for 37% of our total revenues. So, there's been talk at the state level about ad valorem taxes. So, when you hear that, just remember that your city government is funded at the present time of 37% from those ad valorem taxes. We have intergovernmental transfers. Those are transfers from the special revenue funds, the Toho Interlocal Fund, the OUC Interlocal Fund, utility tax, and the gas tax. So, this is the breakdown of where our revenues come from. These are general fund expenditures. And as you can see, we put police appropriately in the blue and the red. And as you can see, the total, so 58% of our entire general fund budget is public safety. After that, the general governmental costs, and I'm half blind, so I can't read that percentage from all the way here. But that's the administrative people, city manager, myself, human resources, procurement, and so forth. Transportation is your streets. And then, we have reserves of $500,000, general fund reserves. So, the key focus areas in our strategic goals, the first one is diverse and magnetic economic development. economic development. So under that, we have a downtown public-private partnership mixed-use project in the works, our parking, Centennial Park improvements, Phase One, and a downtown signage project. I'm not going to read all these, but effective community safety, as you can see, public safety is a priority for the City of St. Cloud. So we're, we have the new positions. We were funded for the Phase One of the public safety complex, as well as Fire Station 35 and 36 during this past fiscal year. So those projects have, are getting off the ground now, so you will see movement on those. We have a new, a purchase of a new fire engine and a purchase of a new ambulance, as well as replacement of 17 public safety vehicles. And finally, Tennessee Avenue and 17th Street stormwater improvements, and that was also funded in the current fiscal year, but work will go, will be ongoing for that project. For high-performing government, we have 16 total new positions. The citywide pay increase, that is in line with the City of Kissimmee, and which we're in constant competition for staff for. Security, additional security services for City Hall, so that's to come. The police chief is leading that effort. Some backup appliances for data protection, for information technology, and enterprise resource planning. Basically, that's your new finance, human resources, and procurement system. We put our initial $1 million into that project that will cost us somewhere in the range of $4 million, but our current system is approximately 30 years old. Effective transportation network funded projects, we have the LaSalle Avenue extension, Rummel Road roundabout, additional parking on Lake Shore. We have our annual master plan paving project, and we have our first paving project funded with franchise fees. That's $536,000 and some change, so you'll see some additional paving work throughout the city in the year to come. And with that, staff recommends approval of resolution 2025-098R, and we're requesting City Council approve the same resolution 2025-098R.
All right. Is RoboDog part of our council security? Is he going to be in here with lasers shooting out of his eyes and?
If, if approved for that grant, RoboDog will come forth on a future budget amendment.
But he's free, right? If we get it? I like that. I like free.
That is correct, but we'll have to recognize the grant revenue and then the expenditure.
That's your department.
I'm the bean counter. I understand.
I just understand free. Anyone in the audience like to speak on this item? Council discussion? City attorney? No? You acted like you wanted to say something to us.
I was just going to remind, after the vote, I was going to remind everybody, this is not final, and they'll be back in front again on the September 18th meeting.
Yes, sir. And can we get a motion?
Motion to approve.
I heard his voice first. You are slow at it, though. He jumped right in halfway. Motion approved from Councilmember Urban, second from Councilmember Fletcher. Madam clerk, please call the roll.
Deputy Mayor Gilbert?
Aye.
Councilmember Fletcher?
Aye.
Councilmember Paul?
Aye.
Councilmember Urban?
Aye.
Mayor Robertson?
Aye.
Motion carries five zero.
Thank you, but before I end, I want to thank all my fellow directors, as well as the city manager and the deputy city manager, as well as yourselves. So for the citizens' information, this process starts in January, so it's not going to be but a few months, and we're going to start on the following year. So the directors put together their budgets. We have individual meetings with the directors and the city manager, and then we have our workshop with you all. So it's, it's a very long, drawn-out process, and a lot of work goes into it. So thank you to everyone for getting us to this point. It's a very streamlined budget, so from the taxpayers' perspective, you're getting good value for your money. We continue to do things as efficiently as we can. So thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Cooper. I know you look forward to budget time every year, and it's like Christmas.
It never is.
Yeah. And thanks to all the staff as well. I know it's, it's a long, drawn-out process. All right. And so we've, I think you just commented after we took the vote on that. So will the clerk please read item number five into the record? Is that correct? Are we on five? Nope. We move down to number?
Eleven?
Final public hearing for ordinance number 2025-53. An ordinance of the City Council of the City of St. Cloud, Florida, amending Chapter 24 Environment by creating Article 9 Open Burning, providing prohibiting, permitting, exemption, emergency prohibition, extinguishment, and suppression of enforcement and penalties, providing for findings, conflict, severability, administrative corrections, codifications, publications, and effective date.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. Jason Miller, Fire Chief. Before you is resolution 2025-53. This is a resolution to amend the city code. As you recall, many months ago, it was brought forward about creating some burn ordinances due to some issues we had here in the city, as well as the drought. Through looking at the past council meetings, there was a 2025-53R that we, that we thought was our item that had gotten approved. It had nothing to do with the burn ban whatsoever, so this one missed getting put back on for that second reading. So we are here today seeking approval for this. Staff recommend approval. Again, it amends Chapter 24 Environmental Concerns for the City, provides the fire department with approval and permitting for outside fires, lists permitted and prohibited types of fire. Particularly, it provides burning prohibition language, drought indexes, land clearing, et cetera, and it creates enforcement mechanisms for the city to take action against those property owners who burn when they're told not to.
All right. And where did that picture come from? That's not.
That is an Andrew picture, so that's a good question, but it looks cool, and it's a fire.
Deputy Mayor.
Yep. Fire Chief, we, we did have this meeting, and we did have major complaints. I received them myself about burning. And you, as the Fire Chief, I'm going to rely on this for, and you saying you recommend this?
Absolutely. So this gives us two mechanisms. It allows us to go out and inspect the property and say yea or nay. It also allows us to work with the Division of Forestry to grant authorization for certain areas that are maybe further out inside the city limits where it wouldn't have a bearing. But regardless, the, the land clearing burning has specific provisions in this amendment, I guess would be the best way to put it.
Well, I appreciate you, and I think professionalism has shown itself, and we appreciate you as a chief, and I don't want to state this, but we don't need a California.
Absolutely. We're a little blessed here. We don't have hills and mountains. Our droughts tend to, yes, they're bad, but they're not, the terrain helps us not be that bad. We've had some rough calls out in Narcoosi area and some of those areas that are actually just outside the city limits. We've been quite blessed, and we're going to keep going that direction with the brushfires, hopefully. But I would say be careful of palmettos and drought season. They're like plant-based gasoline for all intents and purposes.
And growing up, Smokey the Bear was my, my hero. So we want to keep it that way, and I appreciate everything you do, and I yield back to you on that, Mayor.
Yeah. Fire Chief, I believe this came about from a call that y'all had went on off Narcoosi Road, right?
Correct. It was the property down on the backside of Nora Tyson, which was a land clearing burn, which just, it turned into a mess, not just for us, but for some property owners in the area, with some ash fall and some damage to some structures as a result. That was a civil situation that they resolved with the property owners. We weren't involved in that, but we did have some issues with some enforcement mechanisms that we did not have at that time that this more than takes care of.
Yeah. And thank you for recognizing those and bringing them forward, and I know you had to work with legal as well to kind of figure out what's the, if state kind of governs a lot of this.
I'm here if you have any questions.
Anyone in the audience like to speak on this item?
Mayor, just put a clarification. The chief said it, and it's on your slide, but this is an ordinance. It's not a resolution, I think.
My apologies.
So.
That would be, that would be.
It's an ordinance?
Yes.
Okay. So is that an Andrew thing, too?
No, that was a me thing.
Do we not keep you busy enough? You're making slides and? You know how to do PowerPoint?
I know how to make PowerPoints.
They teach that in the fire academy?
Obviously can't figure out the difference between ordinance and resolution.
They don't give you enough to do, do they?
I've had plenty to do.
All right. And now do we have any, anyone in the audience like to speak on this item? And public council comments or discussion? Can we get a motion?
Motion to approve.
Motion approved. Councilmember Paul?
Second.
Second from Councilmember Urban. Madam clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Fletcher?
Aye.
Councilmember Paul?
Aye.
Councilmember Urban?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Gilbert?
Aye.
Mayor Robertson?
Aye.
Motion carries five zero.
Thank you, Chief. All right. And will the clerk please read item number 12 into the record?
Final public hearing for ordinance number 2025-54. An ordinance of the City Council of the City of St. Cloud, Florida, providing a zoning amendment of the zoning map of the Land Development Code of the City of St. Cloud, Florida, specifically changing zoning designation approximately plus minus 61.698 acres, identified as City Parks Rezoning Project ZMA 25-00006, from P Professional to OR Open Recreation, located at 1104 Lake Shore Boulevard, 317 Delaware Avenue, 300 Georgia Avenue, and 120113 Street, providing for entering the designation of the official zoning map, filing the planning recommendations, proof of publication, severability, and effective date.
Good evening. Melissa Dunkland, Director of Community Development. This case before you tonight is for the zoning map amendment for the project known as City Parks Rezoning. The existing zoning district is professional. The requested zoning designation is open space and recreation, and it is consistent with the existing future land use of parks and open space. This request is compatible with the surrounding area and will have no adverse impacts on city facilities. Here's a graphic representation of the future land use map depicting the park and open space land use. And here's a graphic representation of the zoning map depicting the professional zoning districts for context. Honor before June 16th, 2025, staff recommended approval. Planning Commission also recommended approval at their meeting on August 19th, 2025. Likewise, it is requested that council approve ordinance number 2025-54. This is a city-initiated project, so staff is available if you have any questions.
All right. Melissa, can you go back one side, please?
Sure.
Does that also include the, the plant, the water treatment plant?
It doesn't appear so.
The old plant, the Toho?
No, sir. It doesn't, it doesn't capture that.
Okay. So are we keeping that? What is the designation on that, the future land use?
It's professional. It's just not being changed to OR.
Okay. We're going to keep that. I assume there's a, the gap in between the red where it shows the blue, is that owned by the state with, in the lake? Is that why? I think we looked that up.
I think so.
Even though there's land that goes all the way there, it's a. But we actually have land, but it's not, does the city not own that section?
That's a really good question, because that's where the bathroom is with the pumps for the stormwater pond.
You know, we've been maintaining it, so we should still have the right to have it.
Our retention pond is on it. We have our bike trail on it also.
So I can just go build a house on it and live on there for free?
I'm sure there's some type of mapping issue that we can.
If H.R. Thornton were here, we'd.
Yeah.
He already would have done it.
The property, I mean, we use the property appraiser map as the base to our GIS, so that may be something that we need to investigate with the property appraiser to find out why it's not shown on there.
Right. And it's, it's a little quirky, that whole area in the way that it is. Actually, as I recall, in the charter, I think there's a provision that talks about how everything between lake, the Lake Shore and the water is considered part of Lake Shore Boulevard. It's actually right-of-way, public right-of-way areas, and I think that's how it's established in the charter. So it's, we have the right to be there, and depending on the water level and how, how high the lake rises, you know, it, it could be state lands, or it could be the city's, but we have the right to be there by basically the way the charter is.
I hope so. Been there for how many years? All right. Anyone in the audience like to speak on this item? And council discussion? And can we get a motion?
Motion approved.
Motion approved. Deputy Mayor Gilbert?
Second.
Second from Councilmember Urban. Madam clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Paul?
Aye.
Councilmember Urban?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Gilbert?
Aye.
Councilmember Fletcher? Mayor Robertson?
Aye.
Motion carries four zero.
And will the clerk please read item number 13 into the record?
Final public hearing for ordinance number 2025-61. An ordinance of the City Council of the City of St. Cloud, Florida, to annex into the City of St. Cloud approximately plus minus 9.04 acres, identified as Grace Community Church Project ANX 25-00017, generally located north of Eastern Lebronson Memorial Highway, east of Nova Road, south of Lake Lizzie Drive, and west of Bradley Drive, in accordance with the voluntary annexation provisions of Chapter 171.044 Florida statutes.
Yes, ma'am.
Good evening again. Melissa Dunkland, Director of Community Development. This, this request is for the voluntary annexation of the project known as Grace Community Church. This request meets the statutory requirements and is consistent with our joint planning agreement with Ocelot County, as it is contiguous and reasonably compact. The existing future land use, which is still a county designation, is community center, and the existing zoning is community center perimeter. Those are both county designations. Here's a graphic representation of the future land use map depicting that existing county community center land use. And here's a graphic representation of the zoning map depicting the county's existing community center perimeter zoning district for context. The associated comprehensive plan amendment and zoning map amendment were both continued to the October 9th City Council meeting. Honor before July 9th, 2025, staff recommended approval. Planning Commission is also, I'm sorry, Planning Commission also recommended approval at their meeting on August 19th, 2025. Likewise, it's requested that City Council approve ordinance number 2025-61, and the applicant and myself are available if you have any questions.
All right. Thank you. Anyone in the audience like to speak on this item? And council discussion? Can I get a motion from council?
Motion to approve.
Motion approved. Councilmember Paul, second from Councilmember Urban. Madam clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Urban?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Gilbert?
Aye.
Councilmember Fletcher? Councilmember Paul?
Aye.
Mayor Robertson?
Aye.
Motion carries five zero.
Will the clerk please read item number 16 into the record?
Public hearing for resolution number 2025-111R. A resolution of the City Council of the City of St. Cloud, Florida, granting a conditional use for private school in the R1B single-family dwelling zoning district on the plus minus 2.45 acres of land known as the Alter Academy Project CNU 25-0001, located at 1215 Old Hickory Tree Road, as described in the body of this resolution.
Good evening again. This case before you tonight is for a conditional use permit request for the project known as the Alter Academy. The future land use is low-density residential, and the existing zoning is R1B single-family dwelling. The proposed conditional use is for a private school. Their proposed hours of operation are Monday through Friday, 8:00 a.m. to 2:30 p.m. The proposed student capacity is 40 students. That will be divided between two modular buildings with 20 students in each building, and they are proposing to have four staff members teaching grades K through eight, sorry, K through 12. Here's a graphic representation of our future land use map depicting the low-density residential land use. And this map depicts the current zoning of R1B. Here's a graphic representation of the site plan showing the location of the existing modular buildings. The two squares that are highlighted in the lower right-hand corner are the existing highlight, existing modular buildings where they are proposing to locate the private Honor before July 16th, 2025, staff recommended approval with the following conditions, which I'll read into the record. conditions, which I'll read into the record. Number one, the approval of the requested conditional use does not constitute the approval of the provided concept plan. Changes to the site will require approval of a site development plan and any can, and any additional approvals required by the Land Development Code. Number two, no reduction in parking shall be permitted. Number three, this approval is for this private school, the Alter Academy, only. Upon this school leaving the subject property, the conditional use shall expire. For as long as the use permitted hereunder continues, in the event that stacking or standing of vehicles encroaches into the public right of way or otherwise interferes with flow of vehicular traffic as determined by the city, the resolution may be brought back before City Council for review and consideration of additional conditions to address traffic issues or possible revocation of rights granted hereunder in perpetuity. At their meeting on August nineteenth, twenty twenty-five, Planning Commission recommended approval with conditions. Likewise, it is requested that council approve resolution number twenty twenty-five dash one-one-one R with the conditions as stated by staff for the conditional use permit for the project known as the Alter Academy. At this time, the applicant and staff are available for questions.
All right, thank you. Deputy Mayor Gilbert?
I have to recuse myself from this.
Yes, sir, thank you.
You'll need to fill out the form, so get it from the clerk's office.
Yes, sir. All right, would the applicant like to speak on this item?
Good evening, City Councilmen and women, and City Manager. Thank you for having us back again. We had some previous issues with the school that we were wanting to bring on here, and we found Mr. Moore's objections to some of that to be credible, so we are no longer in any way associated with the previous school that was looking to get on property and looking to start something fresh and new, uh, that really benefits the city, you know, especially in the last planning meeting, seeing the need for, for both, uh, school and student, you know, availability. We think it's a great fit for the St. Cloud, and also creates for new jobs in the area instead of people leaving the area and creating more traffic, so we're very grateful that we can help out the community in this way, you know? We really have a vision from baby to bingo, you know, for, for the community, that we have something for everybody to be able to help them, you know, support them, love on them, and in any way possible. Uh, the other issues we had with the pantry and the food line have been completely corrected. Uh, we have now parking and walking in, and it's a completely, you know, comfortable and easy transition. We actually had during the summer, one of our clients had an issue with, uh, heat, where we had to have the emergency services out. Fire truck, ambulance, both came through right in the middle of everything completely easily, you know, great transition in and out, no problems with any stacking, standing, uh, parking. Uh, last Wednesday being the day that we do the pantry after Labor Day, we actually had an increase from the ones that didn't come Monday, so we actually served two-hundred-and-twenty-five families, six-hundred-and-fifty people that day, and in and out with no problem. So it was a really good test of everything, you know, the changes that you guys had asked that we implement, and we appreciate your time.
Yes, sir, thank you. And would anyone, any questions from the council to the applicant? Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone in the audience like to speak on this item? All right, council discussion. And can I get a motion?
Motion to approve.
Motion approved from Councilmember Fletcher.
Second.
Second from Councilmember Urban. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Fletcher?
Aye.
Councilmember Paul?
Aye.
Councilmember Urban?
Aye.
Mayor Robertson?
Aye.
Motion carries four zero.
Thank you. Will the clerk please read item number seventeen into the record?
Public hearing for resolution number twenty twenty-five dash one-one-two R. A resolution of the City Council, the City of St. Cloud, Florida, granting a conditional use childcare centers in the H.B. Highway Business zoning district on the one-point, on the plus minus one point nine-nine acres land known as Primrose School, St. Cloud Project C N U twenty-five dash zero 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 three, generally located north of Ralph Miller Road and south of East Narcisse Road and west of Hackney Road, and, and south of Ditsen Avenue, as described in the body of this resolution.
Good evening, Melissa Dunkland, Director of Community Development. This case before you tonight is for a conditional use permit request for the project known as Primrose Schools at St. Cloud. The future land use is commercial, and the existing zoning is highway business. The use of a childcare center requires a conditional use permit within the highway business zoning district. As I said on the previous slide, this parcel is now commercial. This is, um, an old map. They were recently annexed into the city, and their land use was changed to commercial. Um, at the time that we created this presentation, um, the maps had not been updated. They have since been updated, but the slide here does not depict that square as red. Um, we do have the map on standby. If you would like for us to put it on the projector, we can, um, show it with the proper commercial designation. Um, and so is the same case with the zoning map. This is the prior, um, older zoning map. It is now highway business for the zoning district.
Uh, can you go back really quick? I'm sorry.
Yes, sir.
What is the, what does it say, U S M?
That's a county designation. It's a zoning designation, um, urban settlement manufactured, I believe, is what that stands for.
Okay, thank you.
Here's a graphic depiction of a potential layout of the site to include the childcare center along with a playground and required parking. I'd like to remind council that we are not approving the layout or the site plan at this time. This is just, um, for, um, a visual aid.
Which, I'm sorry, go back.
Oh, sorry.
I'm trying to understand, which, what road is Ralph Miller on this map?
Um, on the right-hand side of your screen, because of the linear sight, yes.
This way, that's how it'll...
Yes, sir. Okay. Honored before July sixteenth, twenty twenty-five, staff recommended approval with the following conditions, which I will read into record, read into the record. Number one, the approval of the requested conditional use does not constitute the approval of the provided concept plan. Changes to the site will require approval of a site development plan and any additional approvals required by the Land Development Code. Number two, at the time of the site development plan, the applicant will need to provide a masonry wall on their lot to mitigate the sound between their playground and the residential homes to the north of the subject property. Number three, no reduction in parking shall be permitted. For condition number four, uh, when we took this item to Planning Commission, this is how they stated it on the record. Um, they, they were trying to come up with, um, a condition on the spot, so we did capture the intent of their condition better, and we, we rewrote it so that it would be more clear, and so we, uh, edited it to read as, um, I will state now. Number four, this conditional use is for a childcare center in parentheses, subject to Land Development Code one point three point three point three E, and is valid only while the initial certificate of use remains active. If the certificate of use expires or the business changes ownership, the new operator must apply for a new conditional use permit to continue operating. And number five, for as long as the use permitted hereunder continues, in the event that stacking or standing of vehicles encroaches into the public right of way or otherwise interferes with the flow of vehicular traffic as determined by the city, the resolution may be brought back before the City Council for review and consideration of additional conditions to address traffic issues or possible revocation of the rights granted hereunder in perpetuity. Planning Commission recommended approval with conditions as stated other than item number four, um, on their, at their meeting, uh, on August eighth, I'm sorry, August nineteenth, twenty twenty-five. Likewise, staff is requesting that council approve resolution number twenty twenty-five dash one-one-two R with the conditions stated by staff for the conditional use permit for a childcare center for the project known as Primrose St. Cloud, Primrose Schools, St. Cloud, and the applicant and staff are available if you have any questions.
All right, thank you. So it's a conditional use. Where, if, if not highway business, where are childcare centers allowed to go without conditional use?
Outright? We'll check, um...
I'm just curious.
If, if they're allowed anywhere...
If they're not allowed on the highway, I think downtown's a conditional use as well.
It is downtown.
From what I remember. It's a conditional as well.
Downtown, yes.
But where is it allowed where it's not a conditional use? Is there anywhere?
It may not be...
I just heard highway business.
I don't think there is.
I don't think there is either. I'll pull up the code right now, but I, I don't believe...
Everybody likes kids, is that what's going on here? What's the...
I think it's because of the, the traffic stacking.
Traffic, drop-off, all those kind of issues that comes in.
And I think this is the perfect site for something like this. It's, it's not right up on the highway, it's just off. I think it's, uh, I don't think it's bad for a community to have a childcare center. Would the applicant like to speak on this item?
Uh, hello, I'm Kevin O'Connor, I'm just representing the owner. Um, the only thing, it's still referencing Primrose, excuse me, and Primrose is really not a buyer of the site, so, excuse me, I don't think that matters, but I think just to make sure that it doesn't get stuck in the, right? Yeah, so that's it, that's it, that's the only...
So it's not necessarily Primrose School?
Correct, yeah. Primrose was, yeah, Primrose was buying it, and then they couldn't fulfill it, and so , uh, they, the owner still wants it to be used for that use.
Okay, thank you, Kevin.
Yep.
Are, are you the broker on the, on the deal?
Yep, yep.
Okay, I recognize your name.
Oh.
Yeah, what, what's the brokerage?
Uh, N A I Realist.
Oh, Jim, uh, John Walsh, yeah.
Yep, yep.
I know John very well.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
And anyone in the audience like to speak on this item? And council discussion. And can I get a motion?
Motion to approve.
Motion approved. Deputy Mayor Gilbert?
Second.
Second, Councilmember Paul. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Fletcher?
Aye.
Councilmember Paul?
Aye.
Councilmember Urban?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Gilbert?
Aye.
Mayor Robertson?
Aye.
Motion carries five zero.
All right, next we have council action.
Request council's approval of the reduction of code enforcement lien filed in the amount of eighty-three thousand twenty-seven dollars and ninety cents and accrued fines of eight-thousand five hundred and seven dollars and ninety cents to be paid within thirty days of the council meeting.
This is Melissa or Tisha?
Sorry, that would be me.
Tisha was ready. She was wanting to come up here. You sure you don't want to share the microphone here?
Yes, I've got a great team. They, they always have my back. Let me get a little organized here. I was looking up the, um, question that you had earlier, and ye, yes, the, um, childcare centers are permissible outright in the business commercial, uh, zoning district.
Business commercial. Where's that located?
We don't have many...
It's sporadic, I think it's...
Yeah, it's kind of scattered throughout.
I think that's what, that, on McKay, I think that was a, a business commercial at that time.
It's the most intense commercial use we have before it goes industrial.
Oh, okay, okay, never mind, thank you.
Okay, Melissa Dunkland, Director of Community Development. This request is for a reduction of lien for the code enforcement case number twenty twenty-two dash twenty-one twenty-two for the property located at seven eighteen thirteenth Street. The total amount owed is eighty-three thousand twenty-seven and ninety cents. Uh, the property was found in violation of failure to prohibit, but rather allowed signage to be installed at this property prior to obtaining permits by the time specified. A lien reduction request was submitted by Mr. Mark Wells, offering a proposed settlement in the amount of two-hundred-and-seventy-seven dollars and ninety cents. The proposed settlement was reviewed by the code compliance officer and the city manager, resulting in a counteroffer of eight-thousand-five-hundred-and-seven dollars and ninety cents, which equates to ten percent plus the administrative costs. Following the special magistrate recommendation, the property owners provided the city manager with a subsequent reduction request and detailed documentation of the circumstances surrounding the violation. Upon review of the new information, the city manager updated her recommendation to a reduction of one-thousand-twenty-two dollars and sixty-three cents for the total administrative cost, and essentially that is the two-hundred-and-seventy-seven dollars and ninety cents plus all the costs that were incurred after the, uh, case went to the special magistrate. And with that, um, I, I complete my presentation. Staff is available if you have any questions.
All right, would the applicant like to speak on this item?
Good evening. Mark Wells, Dana Wells, thanks for having us here this afternoon. We are with seven-one-eight thirteenth Street, Wells Strength Commercial Investment, and St. Cloud Levy Liquor. First, we want to say thank you very much for the consideration and for bringing down the lien. We really appreciate that, and, uh, question that I had, just for clarity's sake, was what were the additional fees, um, that were represented, that represent the seven-hundred-dollar difference?
Either city manager or Melissa, whoever would like to speak.
Do you have the, 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 the piece that's in the packet, Melissa? Do you have that? You can put it up on the screen. You know, the, the, uh...
Thank you. I appreciate that, thank you very much. Under consideration of what I see here, we would greatly appreciate your, uh, approving this recommendation, and, uh, we'd be happy to take care of it in thirty days. Thank you very much for your consideration. Do you have any questions for us?
Okay, so you're in agreeance with the one-thousand-twenty-two?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. All right, council discussion. Councilmember Paul?
So I have one question. Um, were you aware of the additional costs for the seven-hundred-and-ninety-four dollars?
No, ma'am.
Okay, so, um, in the future, I don't know if it's something that we could do, how do we notify these extra costs for situations like this?
So this is a little unusual. Previously, when, so, so you only see these matters when the item gets to a lien after compliance has not been met, right? That's how you've seen the, the code enforcement reduction request, and they'll, the, the respondent will ask for it, and they'll be in front of you. Typically, when that happens, um, as Melissa pointed out in her presentation, the city staff will make a recommendation. Usually, that recommendation is to an amount that takes into account all of the costs that the city has incurred throughout the, throughout the, uh, the main, the maintenance of the code enforcement matter, so, um, in this instance, because the city manager recommendation was based on the circumstances that the respondent presented, that it would seem fair to reduce it to the actual costs. So we calculated the actual cost, which was, uh, was a little unusual, because typically, typically we would have been looking for a reduction that takes it down to, for example, ten percent, right? So in this case, if the...
Which was the original recommendation?
Right, original, right.
Eight thousand.
In this case, if the reduction that the, that was presented to the council was, was to eight thousand dollars, it obviously would incorporate all of the, all of the costs that the city had in this matter, so we didn't necessarily, we don't necessarily break it down. Um, as you remember, in previous cases, this is, I think, the first case that I can recall in recent memory where it's just been brought down to the actual out-of-pocket of costs. So we didn't necessarily, we don't necessarily break it down. As you remember, in previous cases, this is, I think, the first case that I can recall in recent memory where it's just been brought down to the actual out-of-pocket costs. Other cases will be, they will include the cost, plus they'll include the fine piece and payment on the fine piece. So we think this is good information. It's, it's, it's obviously information that, that the council can use and the city manager can use when she considers these requests, and it will be part of the packet when we move forward on it, to do it. But typically, we don't do this, because we typically aren't looking at a situation where all we're looking at is recovering the out-of-pocket expense.
It wasn't the agenda package, though. We did include it in the backup.
Right, for this meeting today.
Yes.
Right.
Yes, for this meeting, but to make them aware of.
Yeah, I don't think, you know, as he just said, Mr. Wells just said, this is the first time he's actually seen it.
That is correct.
That's all for me.
All right, thank you. And can we get a motion?
Motion to approve with the reduction to one thousand twenty-two dollars and sixty-three cents.
Second.
All right, we have a motion from Councilmember Urban, second from Deputy Mayor Gilbert. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Paul?
Aye.
Councilmember Urban?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Gilbert?
Aye.
Councilmember Fletcher?
Aye.
Mayor Robertson?
Aye.
Motion carries five zero.
Thank you very much. All right, next up, we have first readings and introduction. The next items on the agenda are ordinances before the council for first reading and introduction for the sole purpose of the council to authorize the publication of the ordinance for a final hearing. The council will not take final action on the item tonight. Full presentations of public input on the ordinances will occur at a final hearing, at which the council will consider final action. Will the clerk please read item number one?
First reading and introduction for ordinance number twenty-five dash sixty-six. An ordinance of the City Council of City of St. Cloud, Florida, providing a zoning amendment of the zoning map of the land development code of the City of St. Cloud, Florida, specifically changing the zoning designation approximately plus minus thirty-point-ninety-four acres identified as Elite Estates Project, ZMA twenty-five dash zero-zero-zero-zero-one, from MDX, I mean MXD, Mixed Use County, to MIX, Mixed Use City, generally located on the northeast intersection of Clay Whaley Road and Wagon Court, providing for entering the designation of official zoning map, finding on the planning commission's recommendations, proof of publication, severability, effective date.
And can we add a motion on that?
Motion to approve.
Motion approved. Councilmember Fletcher?
Second.
Second from Councilmember Paul. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Urban? Deputy Mayor Gilbert?
Aye.
Councilmember Fletcher?
Aye.
Councilmember Paul?
Aye.
Mayor Robertson?
Aye.
Motion carries four zero.
Will clerk please read item number two into the record.
First reading and introduction for ordinance number twenty-five dash sixty-seven. An ordinance of the City Council of City of St. Cloud, Florida, providing a zoning amendment of the zoning map of the land development code of the City of St. Cloud, Florida, specifically changing the zoning designation approximately plus minus seventeen-point-thirty-five acres identified as Harvest Grove PUD, formerly known as Nona Townhomes. Project PUD twenty-four dash zero-zero-zero-zero-five, from R1B, Single Family Dwelling, to PUD, Planned Unit Development, generally located north of East Earl Bronson Memorial Highway, east of Talkeharkusi Road, south of Lilian Lee Road, and west of Putram Road, providing for the entering the designation of official feature land use, official zoning map of the filing permission, planning commission's recommendations, proof of publication, severability, effective date.
And can I get a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion approved. Councilmember Paul, second from Councilmember Fletcher. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Gilbert? Councilmember Fletcher?
Aye.
Councilmember Paul?
Aye.
Councilmember Urban?
Aye.
Mayor Robertson?
Aye.
Motion carries four zero.
Will the clerk please read item number three?
First reading and introduction for ordinance number twenty-five dash sixty-eight. An ordinance of the City Council of City of St. Cloud, Florida, as authorized by section one-seven-seven point zero-one-five, one-four-two Florida statute, renaming the Seminole Land and Investment Company, Platt of Colored Quarters, to the Seminole Land Investment Company, Platt of East Quarter, providing for severability, conflicts, and effective date.
Can I get a motion?
Motion to approve.
Motion approved from Councilmember Paul.
Second.
Second from Councilmember Urban. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Fletcher?
Aye.
Councilmember Paul?
Aye.
Councilmember Urban?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Gilbert? Mayor Robertson?
Aye.
Motion carries four zero.
All right, will the clerk please read item number four into the record?
First reading and introduction for ordinance number twenty-five dash seventy-one. An ordinance of the City Council of City of St. Cloud, Florida, amending the city code of ordinances, chapter forty-two, traffic, traffic and vehicles. Article three, parking stopped and standing by amending section forty-two dash sixty-one. Generally, section forty-two dash sixty-two, parking spaces provided by governmental agencies and non-governmental agencies for certain disabled persons. Section forty-two dash sixty-four, notice of illegally parked vehicles. Section dash forty-two dash sixty-five, liability and payment of parking citation violations. And section forty-two dash sixty-six, hearing to contest citation before hearing officer, and renumbering section seventy, forty-two dash sixty-seven, presumption regarding illegal parking operating stops, et cetera, providing for conflicts, severability, administrative correction, codification, publication, effective date.
And can I get a motion?
Motion to approve.
Motion approved. Councilmember Paul?
Second.
Second from Councilmember Urban. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Paul?
Aye.
Councilmember Urban?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Gilbert? Councilmember Fletcher?
Aye.
Mayor Robertson?
Aye.
Motion carries four zero.
Came in just after.
I was gonna say.
I was like, well, he's in the room, but he didn't hear it. All right, and that wraps up that. And city attorney?
I do not have anything, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
All right, thank you. City manager?
Thank you. I have a few things. First, if you don't mind passing that down while it's being passed, I'm gonna talk about something else, though. Thinking about what you had just asked about sending the information to the code enforcement lien requesters, that was complicated to say. I will ask the code enforcement staff if they have a contact phone number, if they can reach out to the person and let them know that the full packet is available on the city website, so that they can see all of those, those costs, if that would help. Okay, because I think that that must be where the information gap was.
Yes.
So I just passed out our current workshop list, including upcoming dates. We have a workshop scheduled for October sixteenth, and there are two council members who will not be present, because they will be at the FRA conference. So I'm asking council if you want to proceed with those topics on that date, when there's only three of you, or if you would like to reschedule either topics or that, or the date of the workshop.
You're asking the ones that won't be there?
Well, if you want.
I mean, the ones that are there really don't care. I assume they don't care, but I would like to be there. I don't remember what day, the dates of that conference, give me one moment. So it's. That's next week.
I'm talking about the October meeting having the conflict.
The sixteenth.
The October sixteenth, yes.
I think it's FRA that you and Councilman Urban, Mayor.
Can we just push it to the following week?
The following week looked like it could be a possibility if council would like to do that on October twenty-third?
That's a Thursday.
That's a Thursday, yes.
I'm good with that.
That's fine with me.
Thursday, twenty-third, October.
Okay, that was consensus, so we'll move October twenty-sixth to October twenty-third.
October sixteen.
October sixteenth to October twenty-third, sorry. Okay, and then, just wanted to clarify, next week's workshop and city council will be in here, in the chambers, but then, beginning October, probably going through, through the end of the year, we will be holding them at the community center while this room is under construction. And last, I wanted to recognize that our community development director, who received the award earlier this evening, her parents drove all the way here from the Panhandle. And I was hoping if, and I think they walked out. But I was gonna ask if the council could stay after and redo the picture where she received the award, so that she can have her parents participate in that picture.
Absolutely.
That was, that was, that was it. Thank you. Well, they're back.
All right, and Councilmember Paul?
All right, so I have a few things. So I met with Carly McGrinn, Krabby Bills, a couple weeks ago, and she did, we did have a discussion in regards to Krabby Bills and their business concept. She would like the opportunity to come and present to council their concept. They do have fourteen different locations, and all she wants is just to share their business concept, because I know we talked about, and it was brought up about seeing, you know, something different there, but she just wants a fair opportunity to come and talk to the council and just share their business concept, so.
Is this a new concept, different than what they have over there?
Well, they have eight different ones, but she showed me fourteen different locations, but I think, just opportunity-wise, for them to, for her to come and share what they do have to offer at their other locations, she just wants that opportunity to do that, so.
I have no problem listening.
I've been at a few of the locations, the Clearwater location, and then they have other venues. I would love to hear what they have to say. I think they have four different concepts, Councilwoman, and I spoke with her also, but we, we at least owe them that, I would believe, too.
Okay, so I can add to one of the workshops, workshop dates. I see the city attorney had his light turned on. That might be more relevant.
As you know, we've been working with, we've been discussing the renegotiation of the lease, which is gonna expire. And we have an executed letter of intent from them, so the question, I guess we have, do you want to hold off on that letter of intent and bringing the amendment to the lease back until you have this meeting? Or do you want to do it all contemporaneously?
Councilmember Urban?
I think we should continue on with executing the lease that we were going to. I'm obviously open to hearing out the presentation and seeing what they have to offer, but also, I think, we were heading in the right direction with the current lease that we were getting ready to execute. That's just my opinion.
I mean, I wouldn't slow down on anything, but I think we do owe them, like as Deputy Mayor said, and Councilmember Paul, I'd like to sit down and listen to the other concepts.
Yeah, because all she wants is just the opportunity to.
If we do it soon, I think, I don't think it'll really slow things down.
We could put the amendment to the lease on your meeting in maybe November, and then would give you time, maybe add it to one of these workshops. Can you do that, I think? Maybe the October workshop you just said, and then they can come make a presentation to you then.
I'm good with that.
Okay, three nods. We will invite her to October twenty-third.
Ken, you said you've eaten at other restaurants?
Yeah, they have, they have a Clearwater restaurant, and they have a different, they just purchased four additional ones. The Clearwater is their, it's around that circle, if you've ever been to Clearwater, and it's a double decker, it's very, very well done, so. At least, they're a tenant, they've been a tenant. I agree with Councilmember Urban, that we've been working long and hard to do this, but we do owe them the opportunity to present to us, but we don't want to put on the brakes. This has been, I'd say, an eighteen-month item we've been working on, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir, thank you.
All right, so my next request is, I wanted to see if I can get consensus on attending a National League of Cities. They do have a conference that will be November twentieth through the twenty-second in Salt Lake City, Utah. So wanted to get that opportunity to attend that conference with other elected officials out the, you know, entire state. Also, to strengthen our local leadership here on, you know, just gaining knowledge on how other elected officials are doing in their city and stuff, so. Wanted to see if it was okay to attend that, and Sandra did pull up the information regarding that and shared it with Veronica, so, our city manager.
I have no problem you representing us at a convention. It's a convention?
Yes.
National League of Cities, okay. You need consensus from one more?
One more. Okay, got it. Thank you. Enjoy your trip.
There's others that are local that are going over there as well?
Yes. City of Kissimmee is an actual member of this league, so, but I know I had checked into it to see if we were, but we were not a member, but they do have non-member rates, so. And then, my last one is traffic regarding the school traffic from St. Cloud Elementary to New Nolte Road. I was coming from the Walmart and off of New Nolte, and I know that school traffic standstill is leading into New Nolte, which I've seen a car stop, you know, quickly, because they didn't, I guess, see the cars that were actually at a standstill. I'm not sure if that is still continuing, but I know it's a safety concern. You can't turn down the, I forget which road it is, by the daycare, and at New Nolte, I guess it's Budinger. You have to, for me, I go around, because there's no way of trying to pass a whole line of cars to get to Seventeenth Street, so.
Okay, so that's still, weren't they kind of just allowing parking on one side? Can the chief of police, please come up to the podium? Maybe you would know more than, I don't know. I thought maybe you would know more than us. So Councilmember Paul's talking about the stacking of the pickup?
Yes.
Yeah.
So Doug Urquhart, Chief of Police, unfortunately, this seems to be a reoccurring issue with a lot of the schools, because they don't have the staging space to do that, so a lot of these vehicles actually stage along the roadways. We've seen it numerous times. I know with some of the redesigning of some of the schools, they're putting in the loading areas on the school properties, but most of the time, just because of the Marjorie Stoneman Douglas Act, the schools stay locked and closed, so people can't come on. Is that what you're referring to, ma'am, just so I understand?
Yes.
So that's a, it's a, it's a continuous issue for us.
And maybe we need to reach out to the school district, because I really thought that, that they had limited it to just one side of the road, so that, or off the road, you know, and the cars were pulled over, but I thought traffic was flowing again.
So we see these, sometimes when they don't like the lines, they'll drive around somewhere else, they'll reposition themselves, they'll come in a different direction, and they'll just stage somewhere else, and then kind of maneuver their way in there. So as we come across those, we'll do our best to try to navigate that and try to assist with the traffic flow, but we'd have to set it up as a, as a separate patrol area that we'd have to go look at multiple times to try to figure it out.
Right.
But I hate to say, once we leave, sir, unfortunately, you know, once we're gone, we're not there, and they're gonna do it again, similar to the speeding complaints that I get on the roadways.
It reminds me, I know you were the chief of the airport at one time, and.
Yes, sir.
You know, when you go to the pickup line, they're telling you to keep driving, you know, and you gotta keep looping around. They don't let you kind of sit there.
Yes, sir, and we'd have to scrape everybody off, even on the entrances. I'm sure everybody's been up to the airport, and unfortunately, we'd have to go up there and scrape everybody off the side of the roads. So we could do that, and I, just so you know, I think it would actually make more of a traffic nightmare, because people don't know where to go then, when we start pushing everybody everywhere, and they don't know where to leave to. So they'll start driving around and making U-turns, and, but it's definitely something we can look at.
I mean, you'd think that they could put a ribbon all the way around the, I know there's a cupboard area in the back there. Isn't, is there a road back there, do you know, in the back of the school? I don't know if that's a concern, if driving those vehicles on.
So I do know that the city does have an agreement with the school district, that when the road is constructed through Stevens Plantation North, I'm not sure what the current name of the project is, that the city had committed to adding some additional space in a turn lane through, through that project to kind of enable some of that stacking. I know that's still part of the plans. The road just hasn't been constructed yet.
That could be five years down the road. We don't even have a go-ahead on.
And that would certainly alleviate, what the city manager was discussing, that would certainly alleviate the issues that we're looking at, that we're seeing here.
Yeah, I think maybe we need to speak with the school district and see if there's something that we can be done, because I know that there's the entrance coming off, you know, right across from the old, it was the old police range there, where the concrete building was. The, I guess it's gonna be a helicopter pad now. You know, maybe if they could create something that, you know, loop around the cupboard area in the back, just to stack the cars there. I think we need to really have that discussion.
I agree, and you're right, Mayor, there is space here to do that, if they choose to do that, and they can potentially section it off, so they would not have to be able to open it up, but they can stage them on the property, so there's a loop through to at least get a lot of the traffic off the, off the roadway.
Yeah, it still kind of keeps them away from the school building itself, if they keep it to the outside. Yeah, it still kind of keeps them away from the school building itself if they keep it to the outside.
Yes, they just can't be on, they can't come into the actual enclosure, into the roadways that get close to the school until a certain time. I believe it's fifteen minutes before school is over.
Okay, yeah, I think we owe it to our citizens to finally take, see if we can find a solution to that.
Mr. Mayor, I think, I believe, Mr. Dunkland, don't we have a meeting next week on this? With the school district? Yeah, okay, all right.
On this?
It's on my calendar.
You're going?
My phone's telling me I'm going, so. So, yeah, I think it's next, it's Tuesday, I think.
On this issue?
Well, on Budinger Road with the school district and the inter-local agreement that Mr....
It's on the pond, there was something about the pond.
The pond and the roadwork.
Were we talking about that?
Yes.
Right, we purchased the pond because we needed additional right-of-way for the road to be able to be constructed. And as a condition, they said, okay, but you have to give us some additional lane stacking here.
Okay.
I'm sorry?
Tuesday at one.
That's what my phone says.
Okay, and as we, in the future, as we start annexing up into the Narcousie area, we're going to have to find a solution to that one as well.
Those schools get backed up also.
You can find the solution.
Yes, sir, those schools get backed up as well.
Yeah, and the original intent was not to have two schools on that property. I'm going to give a shout-out and credit to my mom on that one. So she found the for-sale sign on that tree, and they bought it, and they were doing K-8s. And that school was built to the back of the property to allow the stacking. And then they went and built a second school and changed it to a middle and an elementary school. So that caused the issue that didn't exist when they first put the K-8 in, but, you know.
Yes, sir.
Normally, it's past councils that, you know, that create the issues, but in that case, it was a future one, so.
That was a legal change also, sir, that actually changed the stacking, that vehicles weren't allowed anywhere near the vehicle, the school. They had to be locked down until a certain time. With the Marjorie Stoneman Douglas Act, I hate to say it, I don't think they actually prepared for any of that. So now that it's changed, it's obviously created numerous significant traffic problems at the behest of the safety of the students, which I agree to that also. But it's just we have to find the happy medium to figure it out.
Okay, yeah, I know your SRO in the past has been out there and kind of kept everybody...
So that's a challenge in and of itself, too, because the SRO is supposed to be on the property specifically and not necessarily directing traffic for the safety of the students. So we'd have, we bring our own traffic officers, and we do our best to try to, like, keep people moving.
So every day, we're having to direct traffic, is that...
It hasn't come to my attention that much, but I don't believe so. One of our SROs, one of our security officers are here, but I don't believe that's the case. But I'd have to look at it, to be honest with you, sir, to get you the correct information. If we're going over there every single day, or is it just certain times where things are just getting backed up so much? And I'd have to determine that to try to understand.
Maybe fly one of your drones over there and just, like, with a Megahorn or whatever.
That's coming, sir, that is certainly coming, yes, sir.
Or your dog, make sure...
The robotic dog, yes, sir, yes, sir, we'll send that over there.
All right, thank you, sir.
Yes, sir.
Appreciate it. So, yeah, Dan's going to find a solution to it next week.
I'm on it.
All right, is that all?
Yes, thank you.
All right, and Councilmember Urban.
I was contacted by the organizers of the Brooklyn Rose 5K for Childhood Cancer Awareness Month this Saturday at the lakefront, seven-thirty a.m., and I told them I would mention that. They invited all the city council to be there and all the residents, if anybody wants to participate. So just wanted to mention that, and have a good weekend.
Colby, wasn't that one we cut the ribbon on last year?
Yeah.
That same, that same 5K?
Yeah, we could go cut it together then.
I would love to do that with you, that's at Saturday at seven, you said?
Seven-thirty.
Okay, thank you, sir.
And Councilmember Fletcher.
I have nothing at this time, thank you, Mayor.
And Council, Deputy Mayor Gilbert.
I passed out some information, but one of them, I'd like to go on the public record, so each of you have the backup here. I was approached by Rees Around America in December for Mount Peace, for the Rees that will be sent out. Last year, the city did work with them. We weren't by the people that admitted with Rees Around America, we did not know about it, so we weren't invited, we didn't go as a council. And there was some pushback on that, but that's okay. I'm looking, not in the rearview, but I'm looking forward. There's some cost contingencies on the Rees Around America, and I would like for council to consider absorbing that cost with our council contingency for that. And that's just for simple things like the sound system, the tent, and additional staffing. So I put the paperwork into you, I put the letter of what it's going to be, and there's seventeen Rees that will be dedicated to, for Rees Around America.
Deputy Mayor, when you're talking about the tent and the sound system, are you talking about renting one or using ours?
Using ours, but there is cost involved, Mayor, and I just wanted to know if that's something that we can absorb.
Jay works for free.
Thank you, Jay. I'll talk to your agent from now on.
We have to pay Deborah.
So I have the pleasure of counsel, I'd like you to consider that, and then maybe talk to the city manager or somebody about what we can do. I don't know how to communicate with me, but I want to talk to this lady about it. It's not until December, but I really wanted to work on it early so we can be appraised of what's coming on and also our participation.
All right, yeah, can we get, maybe share with the city manager that request?
I have.
Oh, you have?
Yeah, I forgot copies, and the public records got copies too, so.
All right.
If I have not gave you a copy, Ms. Miller, I will as soon as we get out of the building, okay?
Thank you.
Secondly, I was walking the path of the new pathway that goes from St. Cloud all the way through Kissimmee, down Trium Park, and there is the old Hamilton Distin Sugar Mill. That was built in eighteen eighty-six and was abandoned in nineteen oh-nine. There are still remnants of that sugar mill on that pathway. I would like the pleasure of the council if we could write a letter to Osceola County, because right now, they have the property. It used to be owned and was sold to the county. I can't predict the future, but I do believe it may come into the city at one point. But we have talked to the county, they'd like a letter from us if we can go ahead and use that and put some historical markers there, and maybe some picnic benches and things like that, so people can learn about the dissidents and actually the founders that came here.
I'd like the city manager to go ahead and speak on that. She's already kind of brought it up.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, yes, we, Deputy Mayor and I were talking about that earlier today. Yesterday, we had the leaders lunch, and I did mention it to the county manager, Fisher, that it would be great if, if they could put in a historical marker. And I told him, he was excited about the idea, he said it was a great idea, and I said, well, it's going to be brought up most likely this Thursday at our city council meeting. But I do think a letter of support requesting it just makes, makes the request stronger and would help.
He even offered to pay for it, right? And gold-plated?
He said they were, they were putting signs up at other facilities, so he's like, I'll get with staff, so.
Yes.
I don't remember about the gold plate, but...
It's just a great part of our history, it's not Main Street or downtown, so we can't ask those folks there. But it is a huge part of St. Cloud's history.
That's the very beginnings.
Yeah, that's beginning before we were incorporated.
Before the Civil War veterans came in, that was forty years prior.
So consider getting a letter written to them, if we can, by council, if you could approve that, we will get a letter written, and we'd like to see that happen.
That's consensus.
Can we send them other location ideas?
Yeah, we, yes. No, in our conversation with the county manager, we also spoke about the graffiti on those walls.
Yes.
And, you know, what can be done to take that off, so.
And we have done graffiti before with the Place for Grace Ministries, people wanting hours, community hours and things like that. And that's somewhere we can go. There's always people wanting community hours and to find a direction of it. I even, one of the police officers came up to me and said that they do it on their time off. I'm not going to mention the person, but they actually go on and take the graffiti off during their time off. So I think if we designate it historical, we dress it up, and we put it as such, then maybe it wouldn't be as tag, I guess they call it tagging, as it would be. So your consideration, I'd really like your letter out to the county for support of that.
Are we looking at partnering, partnering with the county on it, because it's their property and their structure? So we've got to, we can't just send volunteers out there to start working on it.
That's a Dan question, so I'd like Dan to tell us what we can and cannot do, if you could ask him, please, I appreciate it.
My recommendation is you reach out and ask for a partnership with the county so we can get, so we can basically get permission to do everything you're asking for.
Okay, thank you for your advice.
Can we go ahead and give consensus for that, that yes, we want that?
There's consensus.
In any other areas that we feel that, was there another one you had in mind?
Yeah, there's plenty.
Okay, well, let's present the, maybe next week when we all come together, you want to provide that information? No, I think that's a great idea, and also, I think we need to ensure there's some access points to it, kind of figure that, too.
Yeah, there is, and the path is, and then there's a subdivision. But a citizen, Mr. Verney, brought that up to my attention, and that's why I investigated. But you can also, when you're walking, riding your bike, scooters, strollers, everything, it passes right by there. So, and this, this trail is beautiful, and it's going to go all the way to Rumel Road when the extension stump through, all the way downtown Kissimmee.
Maybe we do scooter rentals, just to go on the canal.
We have to make sure that the right scooter rentals and that, the speed, and we have to talk to the police chief, what is, goddamn. Since I've been on council, I've asked the city and the attorney and everybody what we can do about that hotel. What legally and what legal actions we can do. I've asked since day one, I've been here almost three years in November. And they just, I feel that, and I can't bring this up otherwise than here, but I feel like they're just abiding enough to get by. The Sears Tower in nineteen seventy-two was built in three years, which was the tallest building. This building has not been in use since ten years. It's an eyesore, not an icon. I don't want it to be the eyesore on I-4, I don't want it to be the eyesore in St. Cloud. So I don't know what we can legally do, but I'm asking council and legal and city managers, or anybody listening, what can we do to put that in place or get somebody that can? And what legally we can do, is it with CRA, is it with Blythe? I don't have those answers, but I agree with our gentleman there, and I agree with Mr. Urban. That's our city forefront, you're talking about bringing additional vendors, people, you open that up, that's our biggest building, so.
Sir, this is council discussion, thank you.
So, yeah, I'm just asking council if we could figure out, just today, how we can ask the city manager and city attorney to take every legal action necessary to go or go away.
I think we can get with the building department and find out where they are in the application process. And we can, my office can report back to you next week about what we think the strategy would be to, to basically put the pressure on the owners to get this thing fixed or to basically sell the property.
Thank you, and I'm an entrepreneur, and I get, but enough's enough. I don't know how else to say it, but I look out my building, I mean, out my window in the building here, and that's the first thing, and it draws my eyes to it, and then I go, what are we going to do?
I just want to make sure you understand that the way the, the way the restrictions in the law with regard to ongoing construction projects and the ability to continue to keep permits alive is a problem for local governments in instances like this. So it's all going to depend on where the building department is and the review, whatever application is, and what existing code violations may exist on the property, if any, to be able to deal with.
And I appreciate your legal advice on that, Dan, I'm just shouting out to anybody that can get some movement on this.
We can report back at the next meeting.
So, thank you. Recently, there's some developments that took place this week, and they're kind of sad. And, you know, we're here to debate, we're here to talk, but we're not here for violence. So pray with me, motion, silence, or something that we, as the best country in the world to live in, where you have freedom of speech. I've been to China, I've been to different places where you don't have freedom of speech. You say something, they lock you up, or worse. So I would like everybody here today, if they have somebody that they disagree with, whatever they are, just give them a hug or something. Because this is, this is ridiculous. With that being said, I did talk to the chief of police, and probably about a year and a half ago, we were getting downstairs remodeled, and then we're supposed to have security systems coming in with those metal detectors and things such as that. And every other, not every other city, I go to Kissimmee a lot for some of the board meetings, go there, they have metal detectors put in, they have security put in. Just a deterrent for the safety. I sat here with a hundred and some odd people today. I'm not accusing anybody, but I got to tell you, a guy came up with a satchel and reached into it, and first thing I said, whoa! Just, not that it's happened, not that it will happen, but I don't want it to be okay till it's not okay. So I'd like to have the pleasure of the council to figure something out where we can get something in place to protect the citizens, the city, the city employees, and also the council up here, for, to avoid any future mishaps. Not saying they're going to happen, but if you don't plan, you plan to fail. So I'd like the consideration, we've been talking about security here for over a year, and we're waiting for the reconstruction downstairs, which looks great, but if we can put points of emphasis on checking metal detectors, some kind of deterrent, I think our citizens deserve that, and everybody that comes in here to make a presentation. So I ask the council to consider that, to, I know we talked about next year's budget, but last year, we talked about this year's budget. I think that's something we need to look at.
City manager, you want to respond?
Thank you. So we actually discussed this on Monday at the director's meeting, that with the new year budget going into effect October first, what can we do to make sure that the security system can be as close as possible to that new year budget? So actually, I think the meeting was set between the police department and procurement, and I'm not sure if there was somebody else that was supposed to be in that meeting. But they are actively right now talking about it, because we do want to, I saw the bag, too, and I...
And again, I'm just looking out, there's a reason we're a safe city in Florida and thirty-fourth, because of our police, fire, and everybody. There is a reason, we've got a great, great police department, great chief, great fire chief. But we can prevent some things just by being proactive, so I'd like to consider that, and thank you. And by the way, we're not going to be meeting here for a few months anyway. So what a great idea, when we're reconstructing this area, to make, to maybe put it in. Don't know if it can happen, just want to ask the pleasure of the council to consider that.
Where's Jeff? Jeff's got the money.
He's not smiling so good.
I mean... Yeah.
Yeah, and again, I think we have the best fire and police department. I know we do in the state of Florida, and I know we're at least thirty-fourth in the whole country of the best fire and police, so we appreciate that. This week coming up, I'll be going to Florida Planning Conference, and that's going to teach me more about the planners here in the city. And I'm going to learn more about them, because when I came in, I hadn't had that planning experience. We plan over three hundred conventions a year, and we have fire marshal approvals, we have fire, electrical, water. But it's on a temporary basis, so I think if I go there, I'll learn more about planning to be able to talk to our citizens and also be able to understand our staff more. I think our staff does a great job, but I just want to tell everybody, that's where I'll be next week, Tuesday to Thursday before the conference. Thank you, guys, for your consideration, and I yield back to you, Mayor.
All right, yeah, I'm also going to be there, I'm going to learn what it's like to be a planner, and I hope I recover from that, so. Went to a great event a few weeks back, coasted by St. Cloud Main Street, to the introduction of the sheriff, or a new sheriff came to St. Cloud. And we were there to greet him, and of course, I know our police chief and some council members were there. And I've got some high hopes for our community, obviously, it's great to see, we do have the strongest law enforcement leadership here anywhere in Florida, I believe, that's amazing. Speaking of law enforcement, so today, I mentioned we had the St. Cloud Citizens Foundation meeting. And I met with Lynn, Officer Lynn, and we talked about the shop with the cop. Chief, would you like to come up here, I just want to ask you, I don't know why I want to ask you questions on it, but I know you'll know about it. I know you enjoy shopping for toys.
Yes, sir.
That's one of the greatest things, it's water gun battles, it's shopping with toys, but...
Only if I get to hit you with balloons.
But you do it when I fall down.
Yes, sir, yes, sir.
That video is never going away. What an amazing thing, you know, they go off and they get grants for this, but I know this year it's been problematic. And, so Officer Lynn met with us today, and I told her I would go ahead and speak about that and try to reach out to the community, see anything, if there's anything that anyone in the community, business leaders or business owners or citizens, if they want to contribute financially to this, it's buying toys for the kids for Christmas and for our own community here, so. One of the things, we're not going to let them not have the toys, you know, obviously, we'll step in at the very end if things occur where they don't get the funding. But we kicked around some ideas for some fundraising activities, so I'm going to personally get involved myself. I know we spoke about this earlier, about fundraising activities for that. And I know Councilmember Gilbert loves getting involved with these type of things, so. I know we, we spoke about this earlier, about fundraising activities for that, and, and I know Councilmember Gilbert loves getting involved with these type of things, so. But I will go ahead and give a plug for that, and I, I called you up here just because I know, you know, you, you get involved. If you want to go ahead and talk about it real quick, you know.
Yeah, you know, it's, 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 it's not just heart wrenching, it's heartwarming when we get to take these children out. We do, we asked for a grant from Walmart, and obviously, some of the things have changed about the five oh one C threes that we'd had to create, so we were looking at potentially a police foundation, and I think we've come up with something else that we can potentially use, so we can apply for the grant, or at least qualify for the grant. We're still in the grant process, I'm sure Lynn told you that, but we're still trying to figure all that out. But it, it's heartwarming, because some of these children, actually, the first thing you start walking around with them, they give you a gift card from Walmart, and the first thing they say is, I want to get something for my sister, I want to get something for my mother, and it kills me, because they said, are we already at the, the hundred dollar limit? I go, nah, don't worry about that, and next thing I know, I'm taking out my own credit card, and I'm just paying the difference, and it's just. What an ama, the, the, the children that come through here, they're so deserving of everything and everything we get to do, and it's just one of the best events. And I will tell you, I mean, the police department, we fight to go do this, because we really want to, you know, spend some time with these children. We find some other children, we show up at people's homes with bicycles and everything, and, you know, when we get into the season, and Deputy Mayor, you spoke about it, we're in some really tough times in, in the world right now, in our community and, and everything, and, you know, Christmas should bring us together, the holiday spirit should bring us together at the very minimum, and I'll tell you, that's where we don't have any barriers. So to actually participate in events like this, you know, we always say that law enforcement is not a surgical sledgehammer, we don't just go out and try to put people in jail. We work together as a community to better the community, and I think that's one of the biggest things. I say it all the time in the citizens workshops and everything I speak about, but to work together to actually give children Christmas or some type of holiday that they don't get a chance to ever have is just, it's, it's, it's heartwarming, and it's just, it's humbling, so.
Yeah, no, I agree. And, and as you stated, that sometimes the kids will use their money to buy groceries for the family.
Yes, they buy groceries, they buy things for school, then they don't get a chance to get anything for themselves.
Yeah, and I know the We Dare to Care, they actually sponsored it last year, they fund, I know Vinnie Shepherd was out there with the credit card as, as we came through the line, and.
That's correct, so we partnered with We Dare to Care, but they would not necessarily, when we asked for the grant money, they wouldn't give it to We Dare to Care directly, so it had to be a law enforcement type of five oh one C three, which we did not have at the time, so we had a difficult time trying to qualify for all that to make it work.
Yeah, and, and we have the St. Cloud Citizens Foundation, which is a five oh one C three.
And it's a government foundation, which is the most important part of it, it's under the government umbrella, so I think, or it should be, so I think that, that might make the difference to potentially get some funding.
I sit on there along with two others, which includes Donna Cooley, and Donna's amazing, obviously, she's kind of kept the, the finances together with that, and. So we're gonna, we're gonna do some great things with that to assist with this program, we'll make sure it, it goes off, so, without any, so.
Thank you, sir.
I want to thank you for everything you do, but I'm gonna go ahead and give a plug for that as well, and. So Officer Lynn, and also talked to Sergeant Stockdill on this.
Yes, he's our new community engagement supervisor.
Yeah, and he's really excited about getting involved and do, and really doing things with this, this event.
Absolutely.
So we, we kicked around some fundraising ideas in about a twenty minute phone call, so.
Doesn't have to do anything with water balloons, does it? I'm still waterlogged from the summer.
No, but we have to talk about that, about a dunk tank, I don't know.
That's right.
No, but I, I will say, so Officer Lynn, you know, she wrote up a lot of information here. But, but here's what she said, they're preparing for the annual Shop with the Cop event, planned for the third week of December. Each year, approximately forty-five children are partnered with St. Cloud Police Officers for a memorable shopping experience where they select gifts and necessities. The program not only brings joy to families in need, but also creates lasting positive connections between youth and law enforcement. Participants are nominated by our officers who have firsthand knowledge of children that would most benefit from a positive, supportive interaction with law enforcement. This ensures the program reaches those who will gain the most from the experience. In the past years, we've applied for funding through Walmart's Community Grant Program, unfortunately, our most recent application was not awarded, so we are now looking to partner with our community to keep this meaningful program going strong, so. And it just, just amazing thing, so I do want to thank you, your community outreach team, and all of your police officers for getting involved in this, because I think we'll be able to get out there and hit the streets, and, and I'll go out there and hit up some business owners for money for you guys, so for this event, so.
Thank you, sir, that's something I can't do, so I can't muscle people for money, so, but I appreciate any help you can give us. I assure you, I will not, but thank you. Appreciate it, sir.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, God bless her.
And that is all, so next up, we have the, actually, I wanted to get, I saw Stephanie came in here now. Stephanie, thank you for, you and the deputy city manager for going out to Veterans Park. We talked about the, the event earlier, we had Josh and a couple members from the, the Veterans Council here, and so we all kind of gave the green light on that, so. Thank you for getting me the paint colors on the helicopter and the, all the other military vehicles, so we're gonna move forward on that, thank you. And thank you for giving us your staff to, as well, in the future here, thank you in advance. What else did we do? I, I went and spoke with the Breakfast with the Pros, which was amazing, one of the other, the folks that was with us, we had John Weaver with the old, the boat. And so there was a lot of excitement with that, and so I look forward to that really taking off and, and doing whatever we can on, in the community to help them out, so.
I hear they have a great band from Nashville this weekend.
I saw that, yep, saw that on social media, and, and we had lunch on that a month ago with the Osceola leaders, with the superintendent and the county manager and all. And Terry Weaver actually gave us a, hosted it, and they've done amazing things with it, totally decorated, and, and I've never, I haven't been out in the water on it yet, but I think they're gonna do great things, so. Alright, next up, Information Section, Report Section, we have Thursday, September eighteenth, twenty twenty-five, City Council Workshop, three PM here at City Hall. Is it here? Yes, that's our next meetings, and then after that, we're moving on. Thursday, September eighteenth, twenty twenty-five, was City Council Special Meeting at six thirty at City Hall. Thursday, October second, twenty twenty-five, Community Redevelopment Agency Meeting, three PM at City Hall. Thursday, October ninth, City Council Meeting, six thirty PM at the St. Cloud Community Center. And we have the Recreation Advisory Committee Minutes, February twenty twenty-five, approved, and the reports, we have the warrant list, number eleven fiscal year twenty-five, and with that, this meeting is adjourned.
And if you can stay for the photo for.